Hello? Okay.
Testing. Testing.
Me turn the screen on real quick if you wanna... Well, there's a delay, so I should be able to still hear you.
You can't hear me. Testing, testing, testing.
Mm-hmm.
Testing, testing.
Yeah, it was just a delay.
Testing.
Oh, true.
Testing. Testing.
I know it's me now. You can't hear it in here. Let me, let me see if the setting's correct on here. Ah. Wait, what? This looks different then. Last time. I checked. Ah. Okay. Yes, yes, yes.
You had to show me how to...
How to maneuver it.
Cause you reaching in there doing magic stuff, I don't even know what you're doing under that.
Down arrow.
Can we not have whatever you dealing with up here where I can see it? Old people can't see.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. Is it... Oh, right there, okay. And then hit down arrow, yep. Yep.
Now, you're talking, okay, now I... Perfect, see? Now!
It's like a...
I'm giving you a training session how to train old people.
All you'll do is you'll hit this button right here.
Yeah.
To expand it.
Yeah.
And then there's a...
Video. Well, I think the video is separate.
It should be, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's perfect. As long as I know where it is.
Yep.
Is there, is there sound to it?
Oh, we... I know they tested it out, but well...
You did, okay.
So that's that, and then where's mine?
Right there, these two.
Oh, right decision.
I can put a little sticker. Like right here. Two, two.
Testing, testing. Testing. Testing, testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing.
Okay.
Testing broadcast.
Town engineer, ready? Okay. And we're off. Good evening. I call this March 26, 2024 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching recording of this meeting. On April 5, the video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.morrisvillnc.gov/government. Councilmember Rao has let us know he plans to join us in a little while, and we will acknowledge his arrival at that time. Sergeant Laurie Strickland has 15 years of law enforcement experience and 13 years with the town of Morrisville. She has served on the crisis intervention team and has received Officer of the Year recognition several times. She is currently assigned to the patrol division as is the supervisor of the 40 squad. We appreciate her being our sergeant in arms this evening. So I will deliver this evening's invocation. Let us please take a moment to reflect on the wisdom of those who came before us. Morrisville has a proud history built on the hard work and decisions of our founders and past leaders. They made difficult choices in their present that paved the way for a quality of life we enjoy today. As we gather here, may we be guided by their example to learn from the past but not be constrained by it. The decisions we make now will echo through the generations and impact not just those living in Morrisville currently, but all those who will call this special place home in the years and decades to come. While we cannot predict the future, we can control how well we prepare for it. Starting today, let us commit ourselves to making the bold prudent choices that will create a stronger, more vibrant Morrisville for our children and their children after them. The time to begin building the better future is not next year or next month, the time is now. Let our wisdom and actions tonight and over the next few weeks be a blessing to the Morrisville of tomorrow. With courage and careful foresight, we can create an enduring, sustainable legacy that will make all of us proud to call Morrisville our home, where everyone can live connected and live well. If you are able at this time, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember Abadi, a second by Mayor Pretam Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 6-0. There are three items on this evening's consent agenda: resolution adopting fiscal policies, updates, approval of February 2024 Town Council meeting minutes, and budget ordinance amendment third quarter. Would anyone like to pull any of those items for discussion? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson and a second by Councilmember Abadi. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimously 6-0 also. Tonight, we have an administrative report to receive a quarterly capital projects update. At this time, we will hear from Mark Spanyoli, Director of Engineering. Good evening. Yep, administrative reports are generally just for informational purposes unless we have any questions. Does anyone have any questions for Town Engineer? Okay, appreciate you making that sprint.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're into presentations. We are flying right along. We have four presentations. First, we'll begin with retirement recognition of Jerry Allen, then a proclamation recognizing Child Abuse Awareness Month, a proclamation recognizing Local Government Budget and Finance Professionals Week, and a police department presentation. This time, I'd like to invite Mary Fossett to come forward to recognize Jerry Allen.
Mayor, Council, it's my honor tonight to recognize Jerry Allen and his future retirement, which will be tomorrow. I'd like to start by saying whenever I first met Jerry, it was on a park tour, and I'm going to emphasize that it was his tour, and there were probably staff in this room that have been on his tour before. And I'm emphasizing that it was his tour because he put his special touches on it. And it was more of, let me say, a history lesson of our beautiful parks and facilities. But more than that, it was like it was being, I was being chaperoned or escorted around town by a friend. So Jerry has always welcomed me and treated me as a friend, so for that, I thank you. For me, Jerry is more like a superhero. Whenever I have a question, who do I turn to? Jerry. And it ranges from, Jerry, when was this park built? Or, Jerry, where's the cricket schedule again? Or he'll say, he may be rescuing me. And he'll say, Mary, I'll take care of that for you. So Jerry is my superhero. I'm going to miss him. Today, we celebrate his well-deserved retirement. I can't help but fill the countless memories that he's made in our parks, on our athletic fields, and at the centers because of the time and effort that he has dedicated to the town over the course of his 19 years. After graduating in college, Jerry worked in a fitness center and sporting goods store. He realized that what he liked most about working was helping people, and he quickly realized that he didn't want to be a salesman. Luckily for him, in 1992, there was a position available for him to be a summer camp counselor with the town of Zebulon. He fit right in, leading young minds to be creative through play and providing needed information to their parents. He was in the right place at the right time because a new opportunity was developing that he didn't realize was calling his name. A full-time athletics program position opened, and it hooked him into a career and profession that he was made for. He was given the opportunity to work with individuals who were seeking experiences where they could spend time away from their stresses of life. He got to be a part of impact in the community where he worked. He was said, he often says, that most fulfilling part of his career has been getting to be a part of the town's efforts to provide programs and facilities that people can use to improve their quality of life. His employment with the town of Morrisville started in 2000 when he was hired as the park superintendent. He went to Fuquay Varina in 2004 and served as their parks and recreation director until 2007, then returning back to Morrisville where he has served for a total of 19 years. You have probably heard Jerry say, when I've had a bad day at work, I go to one of our parks or one of our community centers and watch the participants. People of all ages enjoying their leisure activities or their participation in our recreation programs. And it reminds him that he has had a hand in making their experience happen, and that has always put a smile on his face. Parks professionals are quoted by saying, we work while others play. On behalf of the staff, we want you, Jerry, in retirement, to play while we continue the work. I applaud you for your retirement.
I was talking with Nate earlier today, and we were having a little bit of fun with this. I should have squeezed one more month out of it because it's actually 19 years and 11 months. So if I'd have got another month total, I could have hit 20. But thank you, Mary. I really appreciate it.
If we could get a picture with you also, and then I think some of us would like to say a few words, if you're willing. Can we come on up and get a picture with you? Okay.
Okay, so the mayor made the mistake of giving me another chance to get the microphone, which, like I told him, I can always talk. And like Mary told you, you know, the park tour isn't just driving around and showing you where they are, it's telling you a little bit of the background about how they got here. And in the process, telling her, being new to town, a little bit of the background that I know about the town. And Jeannie's been around long enough to have heard a lot of the same stories I have. So. But, you know, and I said this the other day at our senior center, and I really mean it, and I appreciate this opportunity for you all, because it's, you know, not just a chance, when I was there and here, and even with this, it's not a chance necessarily only for anyone else to say thank you to me about my career. This is an opportunity for me to thank all of you for the part that you've played in my career. Any park that I built couldn't have been done without the support of our Town Council. Any greenway we put down couldn't have been done without the support of our council. And I've spent many nights up here going back and forth with you all and sharing information and talking about our projects. So when Mary asked me about coming, I said, sure, one more chance to put on my meeting tie and come up here. But seriously, thank you all because it's, without your support, none of it would have happened. And same as, you know, with Brandon and our administration. And thank you very much for all the opportunities that you've given me and that the town's given me. Because like I said, everyone I've met along the way have been a part of my career in some way or the other. And I'm grateful for all the support that I've got from our staff and the Parks and Recreation Department, all the other departments in town. I mean, you know, we'll never argue if I knocked on his door or called and asked him a question. And I can't tell you the number of police department staff that I've met and the support they've given us through special events and everything else. I've got to know a lot of y'all. I'm going to miss you guys. You know, and that goes for many staff all around town. You know, but thank you again for this and for the opportunity to work here.
Thank you so much. So I'd like to go first, and then anyone else, and then we can end with Councilmember Johnson, who's known you, I think, the longest. But I moved into town in 2007. My children were small, and we got them right into the basketball and the baseball, and we really enjoyed it. And the greenways are connected now. We have a cricket stadium because of your vision and leadership. Over that time, we have more parks than we used to. I remember coming to Town Hall for the first time, and we're having our tree lighting. And that was a great event and brought everyone together here at Town Hall. And every time I enter Town Hall, I go and I walk on the bricks, the circle right there, because that's what I did the first time I came to Town Hall with my kids. So that kind of centers me. And just, you've made the town such a friendly and welcoming place through your leadership and through your partnership and collaboration with everyone, all the departments. So I just want to say, really, thank you so much for helping Morrisville become what it has become. Would anyone else like to say anything? Councilmember Scott Johnson, please.
So Jerry, congratulations. We are so grateful for your service. And I came here in 2004, so a few extra years of enjoying the parks. But I thought a lot about, you know, what a wondrous thing it is. So you can walk around the town and say, I remember when it was just a grassy field, and now it's this beautiful park that people are enjoying on a daily basis. The greenways are phenomenal. I mean, just, you've left your mark on so many things. But my favorite has to be the railroad bridge. I mean, talk about connectivity. We can walk underneath the road, and we can enjoy, Morrisville is truly connected instead of bisected. And it's because you came to us and said, I got this great news for you. And it took forever because the railroad takes forever. But what a wondrous thing. And just that, you know, you could make a park, you can do a lot of things. But I don't know how in the world you were able to charm the railroad to giving our town such a gift. So I thank you for everything that you do. But that was just one of my takeaways is a big thank you for that one.
Councilmember Abadi, followed by Mayor Pretam Garamella, please.
Jerry, congratulations on your retirement. I think that, you know, I don't think that a 20-year career in public service, I think it's impossible to overestimate the impact that that kind of sustained service has on a town. And, you know, I know that whenever you drive around Morrisville, you can point to things that will be there. It had an impact in, and I think it's an amazing legacy. And I, you know, I really hope that during your retirement, you have the opportunity to drive around and just really take in the impact that you had on this town. I think there are not a lot of people that are that lucky to have tangible proof that they walked through the world. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor Pretam Garamella, please.
Thank you. Jerry, a lot of things can be said today, but one thing I will say, that if at all, anyone who really cared for our grounds and especially who advocated for any of our fields is not anyone more than you did. We all post at times, you know, why can't we have these cricket matches? Why can't we have this one? You know, like you'll say, oh, the turf will not, you know, hold. You know, we went back and forth, and this I will say that, you know, with how friendly you are, when I first was elected and we had some questions about the Parks and Rec master plan and you whispered over to me, "Do you want a copy of the master plan?" And then it wasn't that much longer, you came back and handed me the Parks and Rec master plan in a binder and I still have that with me. So best wishes and congratulations.
Thank you. I will say it seems like a long time ago that that summer camp was in 1992. So I've been, I've been in the career field almost 32 years.
I was going to say, you led, you were a summer camp counselor when you were like 10. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Steve Rao, who I believe is joining us virtually for his thoughts. Councilmember Rao. Sometimes hybrid is a little challenging, so maybe we'll...
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please, go right ahead, Steve.
Sorry, I'm about to have 10 minutes away. I apologize, but I wanted to just say that I am just, Jerry, I just want to thank you so much for your years of service to the town. I've actually known you for over 16 or 17 years because we first met when I had a sports business and ran surprisingly enough tennis programs. And divested from that business in 2011 when I was elected. But over the years, you've been very collaborative and innovative, really enjoyed our time together, but also just your commitment to the town. When I see you at the farmer's market, when I see you at cricket matches, it's just great. And I'm really going to miss you a lot, but we all are. But I just want to thank you so much for all of your years of service, your friendship to me personally. And I'm looking forward to you enjoying your retirement and please, don't be a stranger. I'm looking forward to seeing you as we continue to celebrate the great work we're doing and the great All-America city of Morrisville. So thank you so much and it's not goodbye, it's just a new beginning, but thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
So Jerry, thank you are two little words that hold so much. Thank you for all you have done for the town of Morrisville and our residents. Jerry and I do go back to 2000. I moved here in 1997 and I wish our residents of today could have seen the limited programming and facilities we had in the late 90s and even in 2000. And really, I think Morrisville Community Park was the only facility we had, the only park. We didn't have greenways even then. And so you have had a hand in creating or improving every facility related to Parks and Recreation in this town in the last 24 years. And I thank you very much for that because you have laid the foundation for a wonderful program, wonderful programming and facilities, but more importantly, you've laid the foundation for the future. We're going to build on all that you have done and you're leaving a legacy here that will serve us and our citizens for years and years and years to come. So I'm really proud of the work that you've done. You should be very proud of the work that you've done and I'm so grateful you spent the majority of your career here in the town of Morrisville because again, we've all benefited so greatly. And Mary, you did such an eloquent job describing Jerry's history and how he got here and we were so glad when he came back because I remember when he left and that was a very sad day and very shortly he came back. So we were happy for that at the time, so...
I missed you all a lot. I really did.
Well, we're a great community and great people, so that's not surprising.
You are.
But thank you, thank you, thank you. Congratulations on a well-earned retirement. I wish you great success in the future. And I agree with Mary, you need to play now. You have worked and worked and worked and now it's your turn to relax and play and then do whatever is next in your next chapter of life. So thank you, thank you for all you've done. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I think town manager wants to have a few comments too.
If I may, thank you. So this is opportunity number three of four to thank Jerry. And I say that to say that he's worth more than four opportunities. So, you know, I've known Jerry for about four and a half years, began working with Jerry the minute I worked in, walked in the door here as the assistant manager. And I have literally described Jerry on multiple occasions as the nicest person you will ever meet. And I say that to say that's good because I sometimes am not the nicest person you'll ever meet, so I admire that in you. But also I think that goes to what many of the council members have said, which is that gained so much traction in this community and made it so easy for you to reach out to people, for you to work with staff, for you to do the litany of things you have done with and for this community. And then in addition to being the nicest guy, he would, if I asked him right now and told him, you know, that I didn't feel well, he would take that shirt off and hand it to me. I have no doubt. And that's the way Jerry always did his work. So he did what he had to do and then he also did what he knew he should do. And that's not, that's not as common these days, but that's the way that Jerry works. And Jerry, what you have done for this town and this community just can't be acknowledged. Again, a thank you, I agree, is not enough, but I'll say it, thank you, I appreciate you. And for the community, there is an opportunity tomorrow at the community center on Town Hall Drive to thank Jerry, recognize Jerry, appreciate Jerry between 12 and 2 if anybody has the opportunity to stop by there. We'd love to see any number of the folks that he's positively impacted over the years. So thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, sir.
So I'd like to give you the last word and then we'll give you another round of applause.
I can't think of much more to say than other than, you know, I really did when I said I missed working in Morrisville. I really meant it. The first four years I was here, I could just see so much potential in this community. You talk about the greenways. We did our first greenway master plan in, I think, 2002. And staff, I mean, we walked through the woods where you now see paved paths to put that on paper of where the future greenways could be. So coming back here was a chance to put that in place. First master plan we did in 2001 with Parks and Rec facilities. And so I really looked, you know, forward when the opportunity came to come back. And I'll tell you, it's, this is the most unique community and I've lived different parts of the state, worked in four different towns. And, you know, one of the things I've enjoyed most about living and or working here is getting to know the people that live here. Because I've got to meet people literally from all around the world. You don't get that opportunity in most places to get to sit down and talk to people who have had such diverse backgrounds as people in this community do. I've learned so much about foreign countries and about how things are where these people, you know, grew up that I would have never learned anywhere else. You just don't get that kind of opportunity to sit down and get to know these people that, you know, that close. And some of them I think I'll have as friends for a long time to come. You know, we've worked hard together, making things happen here in town and, you know, that's part of what I'm going to miss the most is just, you know, meeting new people who have such diverse backgrounds. But thank you, sir.
We have three more presentations. I will read the proclamation for Positive and then I will then invite Taylor McDonald with Positive Childhood Alliance, North Carolina to come up to receive the proclamation. And I'm getting old, so these go on. This is a proclamation recognizing National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. And whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. And whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community. And whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting and child development and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow up to their full potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among residents, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies and the business community. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, the town council of the town of Morrisville does hereby recognize the month of April as Child, as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the town of Morrisville and urges all residents, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. Now if I could ask, Taylor McDonald, come on up. You probably want to bring that with you because you're going to talk from here. We have these nice instructions, stand here. Thank you so much for coming and joining us tonight.
Thank you so much, Mary. I appreciate it.
And now I'll hold that if you want to just go ahead and share your thoughts.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mary. I'm grateful. I greatly appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Grateful to be here. On behalf of the board and staff of Positive Childhood Alliance, North Carolina, previously known as Prevent Child Abuse, North Carolina, we would like to thank you all for proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month right here in the town of Morrisville, our home. Our office is about 15 minutes from here, so really right down the street. My name is Taylor McDonald. I'm the Senior Partnership Engagement Manager at PCA NC and we're so grateful to be here with you this evening. Each day is an opportunity to build the foundation for our future. Positive Childhood Alliance, North Carolina and its powerful network of prevention advocates, practitioners and more, from the mountains of the, to the coast of North Carolina, including right here in the town of Morrisville, is poised to provide families with what they need before they are in a crisis. But we know that we cannot do this alone. We all have a role to play as healthy partners in our communities. So thank you all for the work that you do. Research shows that children who suffer from the repeated stress of abuse and neglect tend to struggle in their behavioral, physical and cognitive abilities. These early traumas affect often continue throughout generations. That's why we are grateful that throughout Child Abuse Prevention Month, Positive Childhood Alliance of North Carolina in the town of Morrisville have joined Prevent Child Abuse America in building a narrative of hope for children and families through collaboration and the creation of an ecosystem of primary prevention. Communities must build positive futures together in partnership. It is all about partnership. Founded in 1979 as Prevent Child Abuse, North Carolina, the Positive Childhood Alliance, North Carolina has demonstrated 45 years of commitment to nurturing positive childhoods for all. Throughout data-driven coaching, professional development, advocacy efforts and building public understanding, PCA NC strives to build and share solutions that work for all families. We are extremely proud to call Morrisville home for, for this, to be the headquarters where our team serves the children and families of North Carolina. So thank you, Morrisville. To Mayor Crawley and to the town council chief Acosta, thank you so much and your entire team and our fellow community members, thank you for having PCA NC as part of our community. We appreciate your partnership for inviting us to be here with you tonight and we look forward to more opportunities to serve alongside you in the future and with your families. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, I'll go ahead and read the next proclamation and then I'm going to invite Jeannie Hooks to come forward to receive it. This is a proclamation recognizing April 1st through 5th, 2024 as Local Government Budget and Finance Professionals Week. Whereas the diligent efforts of local government budget and finance professionals significantly contributes to the town's overall, overall financial sustainability and strategic goals. And whereas these professionals often work behind the scenes to provide guidance and leadership to the organization in the alignment of resources that support the vision and mission of the community. And whereas through their expertise in strategic planning, forecasting, analysis, reporting and overall management, they work tirelessly to ensure the transparency and fiscal responsibility of the town in the delivery of essential services and realization of capital investments. And whereas their efforts serve to successfully uphold the town's high standards of accountability and compliance to local government budgets and fiscal controls, in addition to maintaining the strong financial town policies evidenced by the town's AAA credit rating. And whereas we acknowledge the critical role of our budget and finance professionals providing safeguarding taxpayer dollars to achieve operational excellence, engaging the community to understand its priorities and collaborating to plan for the future. Now therefore, the town council of the town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim April 1st through 5th, 2024 as Local Government Budget and Finance Professionals Week in the town of Morrisville. We extend our heartfelt appreciation to all budget and finance professionals, both past and present, serving the town through our core values of dedication, integrity, courtesy and innovation. If you can join me up here.
Here, if I may, I'd like to also invite those that are in the audience with us to also join me up front to receive this proclamation.
Because teamwork makes the dream work.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
So I'd like to introduce you all really to who are the painters of vision and transparency. They are the architects of stability and strategy and they are the guardians of prosperity and accountability. And their service, and some of them are missing, but their service really stands to represent the work and the glue behind the scenes that really holds our organization and community together. And I just appreciate each and every one of you for being here and for sharing your thoughts. So thank you.
And if I could ask, if we could, actually, we'll go down one, if the rest of the council, since we have a group up here, I think it's nice to get the council who supports your efforts right behind you as well. Jeannie, if you want to hold that?
Yes.
There we go. I felt lonely up here, guys.
Thank you.
I think this is a good spot, so just find something in between them. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The town wouldn't be the town without this group of professionals. Let's give them another hand. At this time, we'd like to invite Chief Acosta to come forward to share a presentation.
They are the architects of stability and strategy, and they are the guardians of prosperity and accountability. And their service, and some of them are missing, but their service really stands to represent the work and the glue behind the scenes that really holds our organization and community together. And I just appreciate each and every one of you for being here and for sharing your thoughts. So thank you.
And if I could ask, if we could, actually, we'll go down one, if the rest of the council, since we have a group up here, I think it's nice to get the council who supports your efforts right behind you as well. Jeannie, if you want to hold that?
Yes.
There we go. I felt lonely up here, guys.
Thank you.
I think this is a good spot, so just find something in between them. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The town wouldn't be the town without this group of professionals. Let's give them another hand. At this time, we'd like to invite Chief Acosta to come forward to share a presentation. And I think he has a pretty friendly audience. You don't know the back wall is, I think, some of our officers.
Mayor, Council, thank you for lending me a little time this evening to share a little bit about our police department. I decided to take a little bit of different approach this year because you know most everything about our police department. What I wanted to share is, one, the philosophy that we work under, as well as some of our new initiatives, and some of the things that we've been working on over the last year or so. So as you can see the picture in the caption, who's driving the ship? And a lot of times, in leadership, it's the highest ranking official. And what I want to share with you throughout this presentation is the different perspective that we have with who's driving the ship. And I hope that by the end of the presentation, you'll have a full understanding of who's driving the ship. So I wanted to share our organizational chart, and I know that you know what our organizational chart looks like, you approved most of it, right? And so, but there's a significance to this chart. And one of the first things I did when I became chief is I changed it. And I flipped it upside down. And why that's significant is because it really illustrates the philosophy that we, that we work within. It highlights the boots-on-the-ground officers who are doing the hard work day in and day out, the ones who are on the street when you're asleep. And the folks, as you get promoted, you can see the way this illustration works is you actually move down, which represents the responsibility that our supervisors have as you get promoted, and the acceptance of the responsibility for other people's success as you continue to grow in your career. So just a few highlights, I wanted to highlight some of our partnerships. There's no way we can be successful on our own. There's a list of partners, CACNC, Safe Child, Positive Childhood Alliance, North Carolina, our Domestic Violence Partners, Wake County Schools, and the list goes on and on. And that's the only way that we really can be successful and successfully serve our community. I've shared a lot about our accreditation, but it's worth noting, and Tenaj Brown has done an excellent job of getting us to where we are as far as managing our accreditation. But it really takes the entire police department. And that's one of the messages I share is, though managing our accreditation is very difficult, we were already doing the work because our officers do very good work and we hold a high standard. We've received a lot of grants this year, I'm going to share a little bit more about that, but one of the grants that we received was our Governor Highway Safety Grant, which pays officers overtime, which allows us to put more law enforcement on the streets and work some of our traffic initiatives. We've had three retirements in 2023, and that really speaks a lot, not just about the police department, but really about our town. We just celebrated another retirement today, and when we have retirements, it really speaks volumes of the, you know, of the town and folks that want to be here and stay here. Another thing, just to add to our retirements that we added this year is, you know, one of the things we tell our retirees is, they're, you know, they're always part of the family. But then sometimes it's easy to forget, you know, we get in that, the groove of working and grinding every day. So what we've done is, we've got a list of our, all of our retirees, and we contact them and invite them to come in on a lot of our events so that they can stay connected to the police department and the town. We have worked very hard over the last year to humanize our badge, let people know that our officers are people. We actually have a hamburger-eating champion who, who worked for our police department. But if you, if you stay connected to our Facebook page and some of our social media, one of the things that we really tried to do this year is, is really humanize our police officers and, you know, share a little bit about them, so when they meet you and when they meet our community members, they're more, they're more of a person than just a police officer. Our Training Coordinator is here, Brad Mamble, he's worked very hard at helping our officers with their training. We've had, by now, I did this presentation a couple of weeks ago, so we're probably over 5,000 hours, but 4,4,875 hours since July 1st. And that really speaks to our officer development, our commitment to our officer development, and our succession plan. Some of our challenges and opportunities this year is, naturally, we need more police officers, and we always do. We've had some, we've had some challenges acquiring some of our equipment. Some of our equipment, like our weapons, are getting to the end of the operational life, so we're trying to be innovative in how we acquire new equipment. I've worked closely with Jeffrey Brown, with our fleet. Vehicles are just very difficult to get now. They can take a year to get sometimes, and then another four months to get the equipment put in. And if, if my car goes out now and we buy a new car, it's, it's a year old before we even get it on the street, so it can be very difficult. One of, some of the opportunities are grant-funded. So I wish, actually Josh is here, Josh Allman has, and several of the folks he's been working with, Kent Powell and retired Captain Eric Preddy, really put in a lot of time, especially with the Budget Office, on applying for grants. And we, one that's not on here that we actually got called on, it's just not official yet, is another $120,000 grant. So hats off to Josh and the folks that he works with on getting these grants. It's almost, it's like $458,000 in the last year and a half in grant money. Some of the other challenges that we face is with our training and standards, they're dealing with their challenges, which rolls downhill to us. Oftentimes, it can take seven to nine weeks when we hire somebody just to get their certification back. Our last one was 11 weeks. And so they're here, and we're having to be innovative in the way we train them before their certification gets back, so they're just not sitting around. BLET is going through an upgrade, and so the hours have changed, and there's been an increase in over 200 hours, which is going to add, you know, two months to their training, which means it takes longer for our folks to get on the street. Some of our, some of our current initiatives are in our criminal investigations, so last year you all saw, where we had asked for a crisis investigator, and we received a grant for that and partnered with you guys, and thank you for that. We just got a detective in that seat and moving forward with that position, so we're really proud of that. Again, Josh Allman has been working diligently with our Body Warm Camera, that's some of the grants that we've received, and evaluating our current product and going through a lot of different challenges in upgrading our Body Warm Camera program. Our Traffic Safety Unit Enhancement, so what I mentioned earlier about our, our grant is we got $24,000 to put more police officers on the street. We've utilized since January 171 hours of police officers being on the street, doing more traffic initiatives. In that time, they've issued almost 450 citations where we've really targeted some of our high-crash areas. And another initiative, we have partnered with Cary Police Department, Holly Springs Police Department, and Garner Police Department, and a regional SWAT initiative, where we have eight positions, SWAT positions, that we invest. And with the other teams, we've got, we invest eight, and we come out with almost 40 SWAT members, which is, which is a pretty good partnership. I mean, it has been going really well. There's a few other initiatives that we've been working on, you know, we have partnered with ICP, and we're reviewing the implementation of some of their recommendations. We got our officers, our carriers, to take a lot of the weight off of their, off their hips. We're paying officers time and a half for mandatory kickball practice because we are not losing that kickball game again next year. Arco is retiring, so we're getting, we're getting a new Canine. We're working with Tenaja on an anti-theft operation to really try to target some of our thefts, car break-ins and car thefts. And you can see, we've had the Temporary Impact Team that we've deployed several times that target a lot of our thefts and serious crimes. We've, we've trained some of our corporate partners, as well as our community police Looking ahead, we're always looking for ways to take care of our officers. We're actually looking at a grant right now. You can only guess which one is actually looking at the grant, but it's Josh. And we're looking at different ways that we can take care of our officers. We're always looking at ways to enhance scheduling, if we can schedule officers, which would take care of their bodies. Looking to naturally reduce some of the crime. TSU Enhancement, so we're down the road, next couple of years, we'll be looking at different ways that we can implement civilian crash investigators to help work some of the minor accidents. Down the road, we're going to have high school, so we're going to be looking at an SRO program. And in June, we're starting our dual accreditation, where we'll also be accredited through the state of North Carolina and Kalia. Just a few fun facts and figures. Again, I mentioned the training hours, almost 5,000 hours. Total years of experience in the Morrisville Police Department is 460 years of service. We have double the national average of women in law enforcement. Our SWAT team, our regional SWAT team, has been deployed 13 times since January 1st. And we have had an increase of 19% in some of our Part I crimes over the last year. And we are currently partnering with our town management on innovative ways that we can address some of those, some of those crimes. So I share with you the first picture of dedication, that's Tim Hendrickson at retirement. And I shared a little bit about you, about some of our retirements, which really speaks straight to dedication. But I want to point out Tracy Skeeter, she's still back here, she could have been gone in December, and she's still here. So she could have retired, but she's still here. And if that doesn't speak directly to dedication, I don't know what does. Integrity, you might ask, well, what does a checkpoint, a DWI checkpoint, have to do with integrity? This is in the middle of the night, and these initiatives are made by our officers. They put themselves working in the middle of the night because they know it's the right thing to do. Courtesy, we let this little guy, he's about 10 years old, we let this little guy take that motorcycle for a spin around the block a few times, and that, to me, that's pretty courteous, right? And innovation, this is a picture of John Hodge, who is the sergeant over our TSU. John and his team came up with a, a training for young folks to train them against, or highlight the dangers of drinking and driving and distracted driving. So I told you there would be a test, right? So here's a test. Chief Acosta has a stunt double. Who's, who's chief's stunt double? I'm waiting.
Ryan Gosling.
I'm talking to you guys, I'm not addressing them.
Ryan Gosling?
Okay. We're in the pictures.
Oh, in the pictures.
Yeah, I'm giving you a hint. I'm giving you a hint.
I think it's Officer Schmidt, right there in the back.
Okay, yep, very good. Morrisville Police Department has an international police officer.
Where's the hint?
Well, so, Sergeant, so Sergeant Bailey.
Oh, okay.
Spent a year and a half in Kosovo as a police officer, and that was on our Facebook page.
Oh, so this is a test, we should know the answers.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's a problem.
Who's favorite pastime is grant-writing?
That's Almond, right?
Lieutenant Almond. The police department has its own DJ.
Lee Craft.
Lee Craft.
We all know that, we know that one.
Who's retiring in 2024?
Arco.
Arco, very good. Being cool is a mandatory attribute for the, for the work, to work at MPD.
I knew that one.
Look at the pictures, Sergeant Strickler.
I think she's looking cool.
Yes.
She always looks cool.
Who's the first hired BLET cadet for Morrisville? We're narrowing it down here.
Okay, Fluet?
Fluet?
Fluet, yeah, Officer Fluet. And who couldn't be more prouder to work with the folks he works with?
Chief Acosta.
This guy right here, right? So here's just a few pictures of some of our staff doing what they do. You know, I say we're out writing almost 500 citations, but what I want you to do is really look at this, look at these pictures, because that's what we're doing.
Where was that safety city?
That's at the, that's at the fair.
That's at the fair, okay.
And this picture has absolutely nothing to do with the police department, but when you have a picture of a CERT member training a firefighter how to put out a fire, you put it in your presentation no matter what.
He feels right.
Are they aware that you're doing extra practices? Because I noticed no one's representing them here today.
All right, so, I want to, I want to share something with you. First, I'm, we got a video, I'm going to share a video with you, and then a quick story. Because I feel the heat, listen, I've been hazed for a year because they say I get long-winded, and I can feel the eyeballs of the town manager just staring me down over here with the town. So we'll move along. You got, you driving this for me?
According to the agenda, you have two minutes.
Yep.
And you have a drone. So we had a State of Morrisville once, where the mayor at the time actually had to give the audio live. Do you want to speak over the thing if we can't get the sound working?
So it will really take away.
Oh, yeah?
Actually, and it worked just a second ago. Yeah, we tried it, and it worked.
Do you have to turn off the teams or something?
It doesn't count towards my time, though.
I'll take this moment, this little gap, to welcome Councilmember Row to the meeting. Appreciate you being here. Did you have anything that might be a conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with anything on tonight's agenda?
None whatsoever.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So as we work on this, and you guys just let me know when, when you're ready. Hang on, here comes the program. Get out of here.
One of the first things when I became chief...
One of the first things when I became chief is I really wanted to include everyone in decisions that we were making. And so there's just a lot of different perspectives that people have that can allow us to make a better informed decision. We reach out to staff and we get feedback on, on everything that we can. And, and really, your tenure doesn't even matter. We want to hear their voice. We want them to drive the ship.
Hi, I'm Senior K-9 Officer Carl Rodriguez, and this is K-9 Arco, and together, we drive the ship. I strive to make a positive impact within the police department by utilizing not only my successes but my failures. I've been doing this job for 25 years, and in that time, I've made my share of mistakes and I've had successes. And by talking with other officers and sharing that knowledge with them, it enables them to make better decisions for a successful career.
My name is Tenaja Brown. I am your accreditation manager for the Morrisville Police Department, and I drive the ship. In November of last year, 2023, we were awarded the advanced accreditation certification through Calea. Chief Acosta stated that, you know, we're on the tier one of accreditation, which consists of maybe 181 standards. He wanted the agency to now go for the advanced accreditation, which took us from 180, 81 standards to about 461 standards in a matter of eight months.
Hi, my name is Patrick Lynch. I'm a corporal here at Morrisville, and I run the ship. All right, redo. So through SWAT, I'm able to be a little bit more proactive with my police work. An opportunity that Morrisville provides is being able to be a part of a regional SWAT team, and we get help with other departments. So Morrisville has to only provide, as of right now, eight officers, but we get in return almost 40-plus officers that are able to be called out and helped in case of emergencies here, even in Morrisville.
You know, diversity goes way beyond the color of someone's skin, someone's gender. You know, we also include age, we also include experience, we include how they were raised, where they were raised. You know, there's so much that goes into diversity. And being a very diverse police department, it gives us an advantage in serving our population and allows us to be more empathetic, because we have people with so many different experiences in life.
I'm Chief Peter Acosta, and I drive the ship.
I'm Officer Long with the Morrisville Police Department, and I drive the ship.
My name is Ray Lynch. I'm a detective here at the Morrisville Police Department, and I drive the ship.
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 I'm Chief Nate Wilson-Steeve, and I drive the ship.
Very well done.
Can you get me back to the slide? So while she's getting that back up, thank you to Will, Glenn, and Rocks for really putting that together. There were a few times we had some difficulty with some videos, and Rocks actually came in around midnight to make sure that she got some of that footage that we have for this video just to show you guys. So thank you, thank you, guys. So I'm gonna go right back to the top, I'm almost done, but I told you there was a significance to this picture. Because what I want you to see is, you are also in this picture, and you help us drive the ship. And I know that a lot of times when you guys are working, you do a lot of this work, you go through these ribbon cuttings, and you, and you can see the big picture, but oftentimes you may not see the small detail of the impact that you have on people. And so I wanted to share a story with you, and it's a little difficult for me to tell the story, but I think it's important. Between 2008, 2011, I served as a school resource officer, best job I had in, in, in law enforcement. Got reassigned back to Criminal Investigations Division, and on my last day, I walked into the office, and the lady sitting at the desk was crying, and I'm thinking, oh my goodness, like, this is my last day. Can I get through a day without drama, right? So I go in, I said, well, what happened? And she points, and there's this cake that's sitting, sitting on the desk. And I'm, and I said, well, that's nice. And she said, yes, for you. And I said, really? And she said, yes. She told me the young lady who was a student brought me this cake because it was my last day. And I will tell you, I don't remember this young lady's name, but I can tell you exactly where she sat in the lunchroom. And she said that, she told her the reason that she was crying is because she told her, she said, I wish I had a dad like him. And I had absolutely no idea the impact that I made on this young lady until that moment. And so what that taught me from that point on is that even though I may not see it, I do know it's there. And I share that with you to remind you that you may not see those small details of the impact that you have on people, but you do, and we're very thankful for you. Floor is open to you guys for questions.
We are thankful for you. First recognized, Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions on your slides. The slide that had the list of grants, I was just wondering if you could give us a brief overview of, like, specifically what each of those grants are for.
Yep, so the Governor Highway Safety Grant pays for overtime for our police officers with traffic initiatives. Our Calea Grant really takes care of any, any of our Calea expenses to include our conferences and training, in any overtime associated with our accreditation. The Governor Highway, or Governor Crime Commission Grant is specific to the crisis investigator position. We have a body worn camera grant that is a 50/50 split, and naturally, that's to enhance our body worn cameras. And again, we just recently were, was notified that we will be receiving $120,000 for body worn cameras as well, but that's not official.
Okay. And can you, can you tell us what does our crisis investigator actually do?
Yep, so our crisis investigator will be investigating, following up on all of our CIT calls, our crisis intervention calls, our domestic violence cases, and any cases dealing with some of our, our vulnerable public life children.
Okay, all right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Body, please.
The North Carolina Training and Standards, can you just explain to me what the difference is between those two programs? I know that the BLET program is new, but can you, could you just go over that again?
Yep, so the Training and Standards is who really governs our certifications. They've been experienced staffing challenges, and unfortunately, what has happened is it's really delayed when we get our certifications back. So if I, if I have a new hire, it can take seven, our last one was 11 weeks to get their certification back. Well, they're officially not a police officer until we get that, that certification back. And so that's been really challenging for us, it's been for them as well. We've had some long conversations with them and hoping to see some changes in, in the upcoming months. And then the BLET program, naturally, we have, currently have BLET, but they're enhancing the program, which is adding well over 200 hours to the program, which is going to extend it two months.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one question about, one of your slides talked about Part One crimes. Could you just give us some examples of what those would be compared to something else?
A lot of our serious assaults, homicides, robberies, car thefts, breaking into motor vehicles, those types of crimes.
Those are Part One crimes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember, Mayor Portem Garamella, please.
Chief, excellent presentation, and I liked the video with Nate at the last. That was, that was pretty cool. But I wanted to piggyback on the mayor's question about, before even I go, like, this presentation is really remarkable because it's, it's not just a police officer that you see on the street, but the amount of training and amount of standards that you guys set, and like, goes even beyond to say, like, to, to see a PowerPoint is so attractive, but to go through the hardship of finishing up and doing it over and beyond what you guys do, thank you for what all you do and for all the people out there. My question is more about, like, statistics, because I wanted to see, like, the 19% increase is a significant amount in just a year. And do we have statistics in terms, not now, but if you can provide us, is what is a volume? Like, you know, in a year, like, because you come very, very rarely to these presentations, but Nate comes in and gives us all these fire, you know, reports and how many call volumes and all those things. So in, in that regard, do we, do we know how many call volumes are you getting, and what kind of crimes? Is it domestic violence type? Is it like, you know, like, type one type, or just checking on things? So to give us a wide range of ideas of what it is, or traffic accidents kind of a thing. And then based on that, how many are we able to, you know, solve it?
Right.
You know, so how does that look?
Yep, so what I can share with you is, we have recognized the trends, the crime trends, when they, when they start to occur. And what we've done is really tried to have an immediate impact on when we see those trends starting to occur. For example, last summer, really from, from last June until now, when those trends, we immediately, first, we immediately let people know, right? That these are some of the things that are going on, and this is how you can help prevent yourself. That's not always the case, but that's where we start. We actually had an initiative when we saw our vehicle larceny start to increase. We had an initiative where we gave away steering wheel locks. We had a lot of social media interaction regarding this. We also deployed an impact team who worked horrendous hours to be in the right place at the right time, and we made some significant arrests during that deployment. When that team was sent back to their normal shifts, we then started to see another rise. When we started to see that rise, we deployed again. And you can see, you can see the, the trend where a lot of those crimes will start to decrease when we're out there. We've even had social media posts where we told people we were going to be out there because it's, it's not always about catching them, it's about the crimes not happening, right? Trying to prevent it. So the other thing that we've, that we've done is, I personally have, I partnered with our comms team, we sent out, I made myself available to all of the HOAs to meet at the, with the HOAs to discuss some of the current crime, crime trends and, and ways that we can work to prevent them and what the police department is also doing to try to prevent And we also, you know, partnered with our media, and we actually had a few stories. And so we really try to get that word out there and get as many police officers on the street. You know, we're working with town management now, you know, innovative ways that we can be more consistent on these types of approaches.
Thank you for, I know, I wanted people to also hear that, because I've sent a couple of emails, you know, like, the thing that really bothers me awfully, it has nothing to do with the police or anything, is people are stealing cars and, like, not just breaking in. We had a trend before a couple of years, it's just breaking in because of their own stupidity, they didn't lock it up, or what kind of things. Now, we are seeing a trend where they're taking the vehicles, BMWs from the driveways and all kinds of stuff, and also breaking in into the houses. Might be the known issues or whatever, they're kind of becoming more the thing. So that bothers me, you know, like, and because we get a lot of people, one bad, that thing is sufficient to wash a lot of the stuff. So anything that we can do from the council's point of view or the HOA's point of view that would be really helpful to at least, you guys will be doing your job. And for us, if we can be a part of anything to help you and create that crime rate low, we will be more than happy.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, I want to just, much of what I was going to say has already been said, but I just want to thank you so much for this presentation. And one thing that, that I think, I know all of us are really appreciative of is how the police department has been so responsive to the growing diversity of our community. You know, recently, we had the Language Collaborative Access Plan. I know that the Mayor Portem's an immigrant from Mumbai, and he speaks the language, actually four languages, and many of these immigrants are literally coming into Morrisville just a few years ago. And I think it's, whatever we can do to continue to help that, make that connection, making sure, I think the community policing is a really big way to do that. I've heard feedback from others, just you all coming to HOAs, coffee with the cop, cocoa with the cop, I mean, those kinds of things. And so whatever grants we can get to support that, whatever initiatives, you know, but just want to let you know, and that was a great video. I wish we had a video like that, so that was really cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please, followed by Councilmember Skargen-Johnson.
So Chief, I have a couple of comments, but one, one question. You talked about how the vehicles are taking so long. Are there other supply chain issues with other pieces of equipment? Is it just vehicles?
No, it, you know, we've had some issues getting ammunition. I can say Brad Manville is, he really oversees a lot of our weapons and our ammunition and has worked very hard to find places where we can get it a little bit quicker, but there's been times where it's been over nine months to get ammunition. So there has been some challenges there. Brad's done a great job at kind of mitigating that. Our biggest challenge right now is our vehicles, and it's just, you know, it's one of those things that we don't have any control of, and that's, that's the most difficult part of it.
Right, right. Thank you, thank you for that. Thank you for what you do, and I'm, I'm glad you have a good part, wait, maybe 20, 25% of the department here tonight.
Well, we would have had more, but, you know, we had a few visitors in the area today, and they're all out working that.
Oh, that's right, oh, that's right, that's right. Well, thank you, well, what's that? The hospitality, there you go. Well, thank you, and I'm so pleased that there are so many from, women and men from the department here, so we can say thank you for your service. You make Morrisville a great place and a safe place to live. So thank you each and every one of you, and thank you for sharing this story about your impact. I think we forget how we impact folks, and sometimes we never know the impact, and you all clearly impact people across this community. We hear it, I hear it. You make an impact whether you know it or not, and I think you do know it because you are so appreciated and you are so appreciated by this community. So thank you for that. And also, thank you about the, the social media posts. I love those. Clearly, I have missed them, or I have forgotten some of them, because I didn't do well on the trivia. I almost thought about making a, a lifeline call before tonight's meeting to get some tips, but thank you for doing that, because you're right, that's a way to introduce officers to the community and to me, quite frankly, because I don't have the opportunity to see everyone on a regular basis. So I really enjoy those. So thank you for doing that. Traffic enforcement, every time I see, I probably have said it multiple times to a couple of folks in the department, and I, I wish I could say it to everyone, and I know I've missed some of, some of you, but thank you for the traffic enforcement that you do. It makes a difference. I feel it. As someone that lives off Morrisville Parkway, I feel it. As someone that lives off Morrisville Parkway, I feel it, I know when you've been out there. Occasionally, I see you out there, and I, I don't, you know, sometimes I wave, sometimes I'm high-fiving in the car because you do like a phenomenal job, and it matters. So, thank you for all that work. And, and to Lieutenant Tracy Skeeter, thank you for not retiring, I appreciate that, these retirements like go right to my heart, so yours will go right to my heart too. So, thank you for your service, and thank you for all you do, and hang in there with us. And, and that goes for everyone, thank you so much for your service.
Councilmember Skargen-Johnson, please.
She's a super hard act to follow, isn't she? Well, I think we have the best police force in the state, and the country knows it as well with all the certifications that we've been demonstrating. Now, we received the Advanced Kalia certification, which is phenomenal, and very proud of all the work of the police force. And public safety, as I've said previously, is really something that I'm passionate about. I do like the fire too, so I'm sorry about that. But, police is very important. I really appreciate the traffic calming enforcement efforts along Morrisville Carpenter Road, because that seems to be the speedway, if it's not managed. And we're starting to see evidence of a light emerging out of the void, and that's gonna be a really interesting dynamic that's coming up for the entire town. The one question I did have for you was about the K-9 program. I know we're going to be seeing another retirement with ARCO, but what is in, what is needed? What, what do you need in order to have a successful K-9 program? Do you need like funding, or do you need a grant? What typically do you need in order to keep two K-9s?
So, so right now, we have the funding. You know, we're in the mid, we actually have picked out our dog and set to purchase the dog now. We've got a new handler, because we will have another retirement with one of our handlers as well.
Right.
So we do have a new handler, and we're really gonna utilize him to really help some of our, our newer handlers before he leaves, and really wring out all of the knowledge that he has and share that with our folks. So right now, we actually have our needs met right now. So thank you for asking that.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
Again, I'd like to echo the thanks to all of you who are here, all of you who are actually out working, helping our guests, and those who are off shift, because I know it's some tough scheduling. But there's a couple of things I just want to share, I mean, I really love how you're out in the community, the community watch, the home safety checks, the vacation watch, which I know you're gonna be pushing that on social media as summer comes, and how important that stuff is, but also, just the National Night Out, and that helps humanize
Yes, it does.
so much. I mean, we'd love to see you out in the neighborhoods and things like that, along with, what else? Walk to School Day, it's always great when everyone shows up and escorts the kids. And when you guys are reading at schools, one of your pictures was at Morrisville Elementary and stuff like that, so it's great when you guys are out in the schools and talking to the kids, I know it's some of my favorite things to do. So it's really great when you all do that type of stuff, I really appreciate it. And the ride-alongs that you provide to people, how you support CERT, and how you support the whole community is really wonderful. You are integral to the safety of our community, but also to the culture and the friendliness of our community. You are the face that a lot of people see, you and Parks and Rec, really. So thank you so much for everything you do every day. And, did you want to circle back? Did you have something else to add? Nope? Okay. So once again, I think there was a request of possibility of having more videos like that, that was really cool. You are obviously, at this point, you are the coolest department.
Yeah.
Until maybe the next video comes out.
And I only went 27 and a half minutes, so, write if you'll make note of that.
We see lots of shaking of hands, and you got the stone face, stone face from the town manager. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you all very much. Okay. Excellent. And, yeah, I just love the fact that Fire isn't here to react to his barbs, I'm sure there'll be some fun next time he's around. So, at this time, we're at Public Address, which is number 10. Interim Town Clerk Parker Evans will now present any public comments received.
Please leave no comment.
Okay. Is there anyone here in the room who'd like to address this body for up to three minutes on any subject of your choosing? Saw someone stand up, but they're actually heading to the back. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. We have two briefing items this evening. A resolution amending personnel policies, a resolution adopting the Morrisville sponsorship policy and facility naming rights policy. At this time, we'll hear from Nate Meyer, our interim human resources director.
I too have a video about personnel policies, if you'd, had I known, I would have prepared one, but, but I think we all know just how cool HR is. I don't know if we need a video, but, you know, I'll take.
How about that employee 5K? That's been a couple of years.
There, there we go, we'll move on to the employee 5K. All right, well, thank you very much for your time this evening. Obviously, Nate Meyer, interim HR director for the town of Morrisville. I'm here to discuss the resolution on personnel policy updates. And I do have some notes here, because I know, I'm known to ramble, so please bear with me as I focus on what I want to say, so. All right, so, we periodically review policies to determine changes or updates to reflect current practices or procedures, but also to address issues that may arrive out of the current policies not previously considered, and to create a productive and supportive workplace. These policies may also assist in recruitment and retention of town staff as well. The last update, as you'll recall, we did last year in May of 2023, pretty significant updates then, some more modest updates this time around, but not as big of a haul as we did last year. All the town updates that we're proposing were reviewed by the town attorney. Also important to note that these policies cover only town employees of the town of Morrisville, and that does not include the town manager, town attorney, elected officials, or members of any advisory committees or boards. We also, if you'll recall, developed a work, a policy work group last year, and they've been working feverishly through a lot of conversation. A lot of policies that we reviewed that we found to be, I'll say adequate at the time, and didn't require updates, but we did have some other policies that we reviewed that did require some addresses to revisions that we'd like to obviously propose this evening. Many of the changes are to establish and implement operational guidelines, procedure in accordance with adopted personnel policies. You'll also note a few updates that we were suggesting in here directly related to recruitment and retention, as you can imagine, is always very important, particularly in local government. Following review and the adoption of the updates, staff will be provided with an updated policy manual, and will be informed on where to access the town's employee portal. Policies are also regularly reviewed with new employees as part of our orientation program, also along with our supervisor training and with sexual harassment training, which we do annually as well. The table of contents in this document is user-friendly, so in the Word document version, you can simply click on it, take some right to the policy, so you're not having to scroll through places and try to find exactly what you're looking for. It will be updated, that table of contents, following any approval of the adopted policies. So if you were to click on anything right now, it might take you to somewhere where it's not exactly at just right now, but, but will be reviewed or updated following any adoption. I may also ask if you don't mind holding your questions, I do have a couple of spots throughout the presentation that I'll stop and ask if you do have any questions at that The updates include rewording to clarify or eliminate any ambiguities with some of the policies, and also to simplify some statements for our conciseness. The proposed policies also document or update current processes and practices, as well as any grammatical or typo corrections as well. It's amazing how many times you go through this document and you still manage to find typos. I don't know how that works, but it, it just does. During any review and implementation of policies, it's important to recognize clarifications needed to provide more concise wording, to eliminate confusion, and to allow for further understanding and comprehension. Some examples include trainees, overtime provisions, the acceptance of gifts and favors, the sick and vacation leave accruals, unsatisfactory job performance and employee conduct, and all of these are just some examples and are included in attachment to, in the packet. When making updates, it's important to find opportunities to improve efficiencies and reduce any unnecessary complexity. In doing so, we've made updates to the definitions, for example, essential personnel and subject to call personnel, and clarified the administration of the floating holidays, disciplinary action terms, and employee recognition. Some grammatical things, of course, we did throughout the review make additional attempts to update and make correct grammatical errors or typos that appeared in the document as well, and some of these updates were also made to allow for better flow of some of Proposed updates have been made to processes and to document those processes, including the inclusion of recognizing part-time employees and part-time years of service for current full-time employees for years of service recognition. Also addressing holiday pay for public safety officials or officers, firefighters, where public safety personnel are currently required to work on the holiday in order to receive any holiday pay. For equity with other town employees, public safety personnel will receive the holiday pay whether they work it or not. Currently, only full-time employees are provided paid parental leave. We're proposing the inclusion of paid parental leave and extending that to our 30-hour employees So notice, noticeable, excuse me, notable policy change proposals include three separate items. The first being the proposal of crediting years of service for new and current employees with the local government employees retirement system, also known as ELGERS, and the teachers' and state employees retirement system, known as TEASERS. Applying credit for years of service when determining the vacation accrual rate. This would assist in attracting applicants with applicable experience in local and state government, which is an important factor in recruitment. Another item that we're proposing is an inclement weather pay. This town, this would be for the town would, to provide, I'm sorry, to recognize staff that are required to report for work when weather makes it difficult to open town offices by providing inclement weather pay of $250 per employee working a shift when town offices are closed for that purpose. Doing so recognizes the important responsibilities these employees have and provides an equitable option while other town employees can either work remotely during this time, or for those that may choose to take the day off because of the weather. This payment would only occur on shifts occurring on weekdays when the manager closes town offices, so obviously, there's no closing of buildings and stuff on the weekends. The other proposed item includes the cell phone relocation, excuse me, of the town's cell phone policy. Currently, the town's cell phone policy sort of lives in the comprehensive fiscal and financial policies and procedures to the, and we're proposing removing that from that location and placing it in the personnel policies. The town does provide a cell phone or cell phone stipend to employees in positions that require immediate or after-hours contact. This policy documents the provision of a cell phone or stipend and the information employees need to know with regards to this, this provision. It was determined that this policy was probably more suitable to kind of live in the personnel policies as opposed to the fiscal and financial comprehensive policy. At this time, I'd like to pause and see if there's any questions on any of the items we've discussed so far.
I don't see anyone else. Councilmember Skargen-Johnson, then I have a quick one.
I'd just like to note that the paid parental leave, to expand it to 30-hour employees is, I like that, I, I think that is very inclusive, and I know that there's a lot of families that'll be, you know, be happy that they don't have to choose, so thank you.
Definitely, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So, great presentation, thank you, and I agree with Councilmember Skargen-Johnson. The holiday pay for public safety, is that the issue we've had over time and heard some, there's been some discussion about, does it rectify that heartburn of that, over that issue?
So the, the idea of the, currently, the holiday pay is provided to police officers in the amount of eight hours for working a scheduled holiday shift, may not always be on the holiday, but it's a shift around that holiday, so everyone receives that. Fire also, same deal, they'll receive 12 hours of pay currently. Both of those, we've heard the manager was meeting with staff and hearing that there was some concern and maybe equity, equity issues that certain, you know, folks in the police and fire department felt that if they were to take that day off to maybe spend time with their family, they weren't receiving that holiday pay. They had to use time off, you know, 24 hours of vacation, let's say, or eight hours, or 12.2, excuse me, for a police officer, but in return, they weren't getting any holiday pay, like a typical 40-hour employee would. So, like myself, if it's a Friday and it's a holiday coming up on Good Friday, I'm not working, I receive pay for that day. So there was some concerns that, that were voiced to the manager, and we've spent some time, a lot of discussion, to figure out the best course of action for that, and what we determined was still providing that eight or 12 hours of holiday pay to the fire police officer to recognize, you know, the equity issue there of not providing that to them if they were to take the time off.
Okay, okay, good, thank you. And have, and I, I know there's not a real good answer to this, have we calculated what these changes would equate to as far as dollars? Do we have any idea roundabout? And I know that varies, because we're talking about weather pay, we may or may not have weather issues, but do we have any feel for the effect on the budget? Since we're going into budget season.
Right, exactly. So the $250, I think is a starting point. We did run some numbers, it wasn't significant. Fortunately, we live in North Carolina where we don't get a whole lot of weather issues, but when we do, it's, it's a day, maybe two at most. So we're talking, you know, the number of staff working on those particular days, and sometimes it is on a, it's on a weekend, weekend, when those events occur, so it's, it's not always gonna be the case where we do have that. So, we did run some numbers, it wasn't a significant amount for the inclement weather pay, just on average. The holiday pay is a little different story, I mean, we're, we're, we do provide that now, as long as they work it. Our police and fire staff discussed with us that they don't typically take all that time off during that time anyway. There was some value in receiving the pay, and so employees weren't as compelled to take the time off, because they didn't want to lose out on that 12 hours or eight hours of pay. So, there's probably not a significant increase to that at all, because they would have received it anyway. All we're doing now is basically guaranteeing that they'll get it, whether they work it or not. So, there's probably, I would say nominal, when it comes to the holiday pay, only because they were getting it whether they were working, and for the most part, they were all working, so it wasn't like we're now providing additional pay for that. If that's, hopefully answers maybe your question.
Okay, yeah.
Councilmember?
Yes.
I could add one thing if you don't mind. So Nate is correct, we will be calculating the holiday pay and making an adjustment in that line. For the weather pay, we do anticipate if slash when that were to occur, we would we would absorb that and manage vacancy.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor for town, Garinola, please.
Thanks, Nate. And on this slide, right, when the town provides a cellphone or a typhon for cellphone, are those cellphones provided in the teams, like, you know, published? Because, so that anyone within the, you know?
Oh, yes. So part of the stipend and cellphone issuance does require that those, that information's public information.
Exactly.
That's what you're asking. Yeah.
And so it's available to, I'm not saying to the regular public, but the people who have access to the teams and they could, it's listed there.
Correct, yeah, it's listed. I think we have it in the employee directory on the, on the town's website.
Thank you.
I just had one quick question. I know you, this is just one section, we have others coming. But there is something that sort of struck me. You said something is only implemented when there's a weekday closure and it doesn't apply to others. But we also have M A F C and Cedar Fork that are open weekends. So if those close, are those employees?
So those individuals, the inclement weather pay is only going to be applicable to what I'll call, I guess, essential personnel. So public safety individuals, police officers, firefighters, public works. So individuals that need to clean off things if they're in public works. Fire and police need to be on, on patrol staff, whether there's, whether or not. So it's really only going to apply to those individuals, wouldn't be for Parks and Rec.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. I think we're ready to move on to the next part of the presentation.
Awesome. All right, as you'll recall, the policy work group will be continuing with that to identify current policies and review updates and new policies to consider as well. We really focused this last review on targeted items that the management and then employees have had discussed or brought up in in conversation. So we really focused on very specific items. At this point, there will be some new items that have come up since that review started and then also any additional items that the policy work group may bring to us as well. So the nice thing about that work group is it is a cross-section of town, employees from multiple departments. And we do ask them to discuss with their group and their department if they have any suggestions on where the town can improve on our policies. And this is just some of the the updates that we've made from that one and we'll continue to review these going forward. Further review of policies for additional review and consideration will continue. That may also result in more of us time where we get to come and present more stuff to you for for updates in the future. And the work group will review these policies also to focus on recruitment and retention and to provide a competitive edge in the market as well. The updated changes are proposed to be effective July 1st. That's intentional to allow us an opportunity to get the information out to staff, you know, develop the the approach on how we want to update. We typically handle a presentation, sometimes through teams, sometimes in person, to disseminate the information to staff as well as email updates as well so they're up to date on the latest and greatest policies. There is a red line edits attached to the resolution. I hope everyone had an opportunity to take a look. It's a nice, long document, I realize that. I'm sorry, you had to probably sift through some things. But hopefully, that clean copy provided in attachment one gives you a nice, clean version of that. And there is a summary of changes provided in, I call it a spreadsheet, it's a PDF of what you have. But it does go by each article and policy section number to highlight those individual items that are requested for a proposal for adoption. And at this point, that's, that's the end of what I have. So is there any other questions that anybody has?
Well, Act Two is a lot shorter than Act One.
I know, I should have divvied it up a little better in somewhere.
That's good. I know that we really love the red lines and how you summarize things and make it easy to really know the meat and what the changes are. I think, I found that very helpful.
Awesome.
We're scheduled to vote on this in two weeks. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Otherwise, they're going to bring back the same thing. Okay, I think we're really good. Thank you very much. A lot of hard work to win to that, appreciate you.
I'll have a video next time.
Okay, I think Will heard you.
Yep, that's right. I couldn't imagine anything more exciting than a policy video.
At this time, we are scheduled for a 10-minute break. We're a little bit ahead of schedule. So why don't we just go ahead and take 15 minutes? If that's okay with everybody, does that work? Okay, let's go ahead and reconvene right at 8 o'clock then. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're back from break now. This time, I'd like to recognize Will Glenn, our Communications and Outreach Director, for our next item.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Will Glenn, Communications and Outreach Director. No video from me either, unfortunately, this evening. But I am excited to be before you this evening to discuss our Morrisville sponsorship policy and facility naming policy. Happen there. I'll do want to share that a lot of work's been done on this policy so far. I think you began with me and Brandon. We brought in Mary, we brought in Jeffrey, and now John. So who knows who's next? So I know Giselle and Jeannie have seen it as well, so very excited about that, so. This evening, gonna discuss the current situation, talk about the need for sponsorship policy. Going to walk you through the proposed sponsorship policy, followed by the proposed facility naming rights policy. Talk about benefits and opportunities of said policies. Then take a look at some nearby communities and what they're doing with their policies and go over some promotion and advertising and next steps. All right, so currently, we're doing mostly partnerships with the town. I know Parks has done some and the photo there shows Juneteenth. They did some of those last year as well. Tony Victor, Creek Week as well. At the same time, local businesses are still expressing interest in doing sponsoring athletics with us as well in events. So opportunities there, there's businesses, including restaurants, dentist offices and others. So we are ripe to get started on our program. So what's the need? What's the need for a policy? So I'm a writer, so I like words. I know Jeannie, I know you paint with numbers, so I kind of paint with words. So if you look at the screen for the challenges without a policy, just look at those words, lack, inconsistent, risk, legal risk, and missed revenue opportunities. Those aren't good words. So basically, I'll dive into a few of those. Lack of direction, I'll start there. Without a clear policy, there's confusion regarding the types of sponsorship we consider criteria for selection and the process for the facilitation, I'm sorry. This leads to missed opportunities or inappropriate partnerships. If your approach is consistent, different partnerships or different departments, rather, or different employees may use different criteria in getting sponsorships. So that's another need for a policy. And of course, the risk of misalignment. If they do not align with the town values or goals, you can have reputation damage or missed opportunities to connect with the right stakeholders, which is important. Those are challenges. And of course, I don't want to stop with the last bullet there and miss revenue opportunities. There's money to be had, and to be gained from sponsorships. All right, so we'll go to benefits of sponsorship policy. And these words are a little better. The key words here are clear, alignment, consistent, efficient, risk management, accountability and transparency. Those are words that we like to use in government. So overall, a structured policy will help us maximize the benefits of sponsorships while minimizing the risk and inefficiencies. It serves as a strategic framework for managing sponsorships effectively. All right. So the policy sets the guidelines for our program here. So key words you hear me use over and over are process, guidelines and standards. And in calling around to other communities and getting feedback, some of the keys they mentioned were to keep your your policy simple, easy to consume, concise, because you want to get to the the agreement at the end. So once you get into the policy, you've got a person who wants to sponsor with the town. So you want to keep it simple and establish sponsorships you want to do for public activities, events and programs. All right. Examples of sponsorship include our town publications. This is our Parks Program Guide, our newsletters. We've been able to place paid advertising in those documents. Athletic teams, a lot of businesses who've been inquiring about sponsorships or want to sponsor athletics. Our events, our events are growing every year. I mean, they're at an all-time high and you all know this. And we'll look at some categories for events later on. But there's a prime opportunity there to have packages with events. And also programs, I want to mention our Marshall Team 101, a Marston 101, who's also, they're also growing each time. We have, our teams come up in May. We have applications now at an all-time high. I mean, it's nearing 35 or 40 with a month to go to receive applications, so. But things there would include, we've discussed getting T-shirts for our participants there. We're doing meals now, so another opportunity to get sponsorships to increase those programs. All right, so with the sponsorships, we've put together a evaluation committee who will review sponsorships as they come in. And that committee will consist of a senior management team member, Communications and Outreach Director, our Parks Recreation and Culture Resources Director, Finance Department Designee, and a subject matter designee. That's important. I think it's reasonable to consider that most sponsorships would probably come out of Parks, but not all. And we want to leave space there for fire or police or even communications. That's where that subject matter designee comes into play. So we're going to leave space on that committee for a person to come in when it's not a Parks sponsorship from fire or anybody across the town, so. Also, I want to mention the levels of review that you see on the screen there. Less than 1,000 can be reviewed at the department head level. Between 1,000 and 50,000 would be our town manager. Anything above that would be going to town council and also anything involving naming rights as well. All right, so who can't sponsor with us? That's important as well. I just want to mention the political organizations can't sponsor with us. Businesses, organizations, individuals whose primary products are firearms, tobacco, hemp, and/or C V B products, alcohol, and/or any subject matter not deemed appropriate by the town manager and town council. And also entities whose services are in direct competition with town services and products. For instance, if there was a fitness club who wanted to get sponsorship. So we have the M A F C, so we don't want to get sponsors who are in competition with our revenue sources at this point, so. Example of that. The agreement, so this is the nuts and bolts. As I mentioned before, you want to make your policy nimble and simple, easily consumed, because you want to get them here to the agreement. This is what the the rate chart is, the details of the sponsorship, and also the schedule or term of agreement. So this is, this is the key, this is Exhibit A in your packet as well. All right, levels, sponsorship levels. So for most standard typical events or activities and programs, there'll be levels, which we'll discuss later on. But for larger, less typical occasions, this can be worked out in the sponsorship agreement, as I mentioned before. I would say a typical occasion would be Spring Fest or July 3rd. Less typical could be if you wanted to do a, let's say, a town center extravaganza when it opens up. We could offer sponsorships for that as well, but that would be worked out in the M A agreement. All right, so levels here, put together some packets here of what they would look like. So I want to mention that we group these with the historic attendance of events. So you'll see as the events get smaller, that the, that the rates there will go down as well. So at this point, pretty much Spring Fest, July 3rd, International Festival are largest three-attended events. So the rates there would be higher. The packages would be similar, but the rates would be higher for these three events going forward. And as we go down, we have Holy here, Smoresville, Trick or Treat. Now, I will say Trick or Treat has really been booming lately, so it may go to the other category pretty soon. But as you will see, the the rates continue to go down as attendance goes down for the events as well. And on and on for Diwali, Diwali, Egg Hunt, Light Up Morrisville. And finally, Earth Day, Veterans Day and those events. All right, so that's a sponsorship policy. Next step would be facility naming rights policy. And same thing here, the policy, we want to keep it nimble and it sets the, just the stage for our facility or naming rights program. And the program basically is facility, rather, is a town-owned structure or property, included but not limited to athletic fields, gymnasiums, parks and greenways, recreation and open areas, shelters and other designated areas. And amenity would be a conference room or playground or swimming pool. The only things that make the facility more desirable or useful, like for instance, your home would be the building or facility. If you had a pool in the back or a playground, that's the amenity. And the important thing is that we want to make all those things up for naming rights in our policy. Okay, so we will consider naming requests within three, rather than following broad categories, major gifts, historic events, people and places, and outstanding individuals. So a major gift is just that significant donation made to the town. It could be recognized by naming or naming a facility in honor of or at the request of the donor. So I want to spend a little time on this slide here. So what's the guideline for the gift? Name the facility, all of them should equal the items below. So the key term here I want to reiterate or iterate is at least. So our thought was at least one-third of total project cost for constructing or acquiring the new facility or renovating an existing facility, or one-third of the portion of the total project cost that is to be raised from the private sector if state or other funds are funding a portion of the project cost for a new renovated facility. And last, at least one-third of the replacement cost of an existing facility. Now, at least, we're expecting these to be, this to be a competitive process and put out bids for this. So that's why the at least is there. We don't want to make it constraints around that, if that makes sense. In this slide here, I wanted to give you all some examples of how that might look. So we have three projects here. Our dog park, which costs 1.2 million. So the least we would have set for that would be 400,000. M C P Phase 3, same thing, 2.7. One-third of that cost is 900,000. So we could have a, an Apple Dog Park or Lenovo, Lenovo Phase 3 M C P, that kind of thing. But we want to make it competitive, RFP process and receive bids on that end. Second category is historic events, people and places. For those located near events, people and places of historic cultural or social significance, consideration should be given to the naming of the facility after such events, people or places. Somebody's has done, I guess, in the town now. We have, we have Shallow, Luther Green facility as well, so. And the last category is outstanding individuals. I know the town has benefited over the years from contributions made by outstanding people. This category is to acknowledge those people. So naming the facility and honoring the individual was allowed after death as well. And this slide just speaks to that, what's considered in this category. I won't go through all of that, but exceptionally dedicated. If you volunteered or gave extraordinary help or care, risk or loss of life, or committed to D E I. All right, in terms of naming rights. So if you're a corporation, normally, it's going to be a term for your naming rights, which shall expire at some point. I do want to mention, it's important to mention that the town can have authority to revoke those naming rights while you're still on the contract, if we need to. The donor can do the same, but not guaranteed to get any kind of refund on their end, to revoke their rights. All right, so research. Any name, especially those, we've ever seen individuals or families must be thoroughly researched. researched, and some resources are there on the screen, on the internet, library, census archives, state archives, and the national archives. And the same thing here, we put together naming rights evaluation committee, senior management team member, communications and outreach director, parks director, finance department, and also that subject matter designated is still there as well. Need to bring them into the room at that point, if it's not a parks item or communications item, same as sponsorship. All right. Again, here's the nuts and bolts, the agreement. This is what the business has done. So, you want to keep your sponsorship nimble and get them here. The specific guidelines are detailed here, rate chart, naming rights chart, and a schedule or term of naming rights. So, we mentioned at the beginning, challenges and benefits, and as we get back here, we see the benefits and opportunities again. I would just say overall, a structured policy helps us maximize the benefits of sponsorships while minimizing all the risks and inefficiencies. Those are the keys to that. Let's look at some nearby communities. We polled several communities. We probably looked at fifteen to twenty actual policies, spoke to eight to ten different communities at the least. Wanted to put a few on the screen here, so you can see what they were doing. So, Cary, according to them, has one facility naming rights at this point, Wake Man Saco Park, and the majority of theirs are sponsorships for festivals, events, and sports leagues and teams. Apex, fairly similar, mostly event sponsorships. They haven't done naming rights yet, but they're working for some opportunities to add a logo with their new pleasant park. And lastly, Wake Forest, mostly events, but work on naming rights for their fitness court as well. Promotion and advertising, this is going to be a key. Once we get the policy in place, we want to put it in every location possible, basically our website, including in event packages, athletic registrations, our parks program guide, our small business outreach newsletters, and also our parks, facilities, and athletic fields. Just want to mention at the bottom there, for the naming rights, going to go through a RFP process to get that out. Our next steps, want to finalize the policy. This is a brief tonight, I'll be back before you're able to knife for action. Finalize sponsorship levels that you saw on a few slides back. We do want to get with parks and other departments to make sure these things are attainable, still attainable at this point. And as I mentioned, awareness and promotion, and then we want to jump out there and start exploring sponsorship opportunities and get a tracking reporting measures to see how successful we're being at that point. That's all I have. I'll pause for any questions from you all.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Robby, please.
Hey, thank you for this presentation. I'm, well, I guess my, well, I'm grateful that we are doing this, and I wonder what took us so long? Why haven't we done this before? But one question I have, with the two programs, what if there's a case where corp- corporation sponsors, because your your sponsorship is directed for events and programs and athletic teams?
Yes.
And then the naming rights are dedicated for equipment or facility? But what about the case, and I've seen this other places, where a corporation would sponsor, like, the playground, and that they're not wanting their name on the playground, but have a, but they maybe they want a plaque that says, "This playground was donated by Duke Energy."
Yeah.
Like, I, my grand plan is to have Duke Energy to sponsor parts of the Crabtree Creek Nature Preserve.
Yeah.
Given all the trees that they've torn down off of Morrisville Carpenter, I would like to see them, like, sponsor the boardwalk, and they're not going to want to name, I would think, not going to name it Duke Energy Boardwalk. But, so where does that fit into this policy?
It's a good question. I would say that would still fall under fully naming rights, though if we put a plaque there saying Duke Energy sponsors, it would fall under that one. I mean, sponsorship, the terminology can be confusing, I understand. It took us a long time to get there, which one they use, and which situation, but I would say that would fall under naming rights.
So, then, in that case, for that type of situation, are you going to have, are you going to be issuing an RFP for that type?
So, we'll have to decide on the front end what's available to be named. If they called us, we'd have a discussion with our committee, our town manager, and bring it to you. But for most facilities, it'll be our decision to put it out there. But I don't think we shy away. If someone called us, we just have to make a decision what we want to do with that that property.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Robby, followed by Mayor Protam Garamilla.
Councilmember Fender, I just never get tired of the way your mind works. So, I have a question about the RFP process. So, so, generally speaking, an RFP would be a request for proposals to to build something. Would the, so, how exactly would that work in a situation of a of a naming convention? Because the RFP would be to build, like, we had put out an RFP to build the town center. Would it be a separate RFP to contribute money for a naming, a naming opportunity, and then we would evaluate the bids? Or would it, and would it just be based on the, at that point, like, is there, is there some, some wiggle room? Like, do we have to accept the largest bid for the naming opportunity? Can we, you know, can we decide that one person is more in line with the town values, even if their response to the RFP wasn't as, as large? Like, how does that exactly work?
Good question. I would say separate RFP from the building, of course. Having finalized how that will look totally, I wouldn't say we'd always accept the highest one, some could align better with the town values and goal that you said. So, we're still finalizing that process, how they might look, but I would say we'd definitely be separate from the actual building of the facility. It could be a facility that already exists.
Okay, so we wouldn't, so we wouldn't necess, but, so it could be for something that already exists? That's actually, I didn't think about that. That's a great point. But also, like, you know, if, if a developer came to us and had, is there any possibility that they could have already secured and, like, a naming opportunity for us? Or is it just, is that specifically a town function?
Again, we hadn't finalized that. I would say at this point, we're looking at it to be a town function for us to put it out there to see what's available.
Okay.
If I can just add something, with the RFP, RFP process, we control that. We would have a scope of work as far as what we're looking for, and, and so that, and that is something that we define. You would work through our purchasing and contracts manager to help build that process and to build the information that we want in that. So, so it's all something that we, that we have that control, and we will just say, "In the scope of work, this is what we're looking for, and this is what we're going to use for how we're going to make our decisions as well." So, we, so we can, we are in the, we control that process, basically, is what I'm trying to mention.
Okay. And I saw the, I saw in the presentation the references to research on the part of, which I actually assumed was on the part of the town, you know, that would, that someone on our side would look at the person or the company that was requesting the naming opportunity. But would that also be part of the RFP? Like, would they have to provide a certain amount of research and backup and?
And that could be all part of what our scoring matrix might be. So, we could say that this is what we're specifically looking for, this is how we're going to rate, this is how we're going to make our decision. So, again, we control that entire process as far as what we're looking for, and how then how we would actually make our decisions. So, that is something that we would work, work with, with Will's department as far as creating that information.
Interesting to see how this plays out. Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Before you leave the mic, can you, your name and role for the record for those people watching at home?
Yes, Nancy, I'm the finance director with the town.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protam Garamilla, followed by Councilmember Rowe.
Thanks, Will, and as Brandon knows, like, I've been always asking for this one from a long time. But before I start, I had, like, while you're giving your presentation, I had a whole flurry of things going back of my mind. I think, instead of a presentation, we should have a workshop and have people from the Parks and Recs, Smart Cities, and others to sit down with us and just have, or even your, our staff, to have a brainstorming session. This is not something that you write on a PPT to come up with a few things, you know, because right as you're speaking, like, I have seen benches, like, you know, people who have run through, you know, Greenway, you know, they lost their loved ones, you know, they did in ATF, American Tobacco, they did it, you know, pet stations, you have all kinds of things. RFP in theory is good, but no one will come saying, "I'll give you." We have to be aggressive in having our own fundraising, or basically you put a development services. I was on the board of, I just rolled off the board of National Museum, or National Science Museum, where this month, we are unveiling the Dual Dinosaurs. We raised twelve-and-a-half million dollars, and we didn't do an RFP. We had to go behind, in a Bank of America, we had to go behind Duke Energy, we had to go behind this one, and there were people who are specialized to go behind to get that. It's worth spending that money because they have their contacts. Staff does not have it. We don't have it in the council, but there are people around who will get you those things, and it's worth spending that money now because you'll give opportunity for all the resources outside. That's, I strongly feel, because, example, we are surrounded by RTP and all the tech companies. They don't know what to give. We have to basically cater to what they can give. Example, Will's bid. I was talking, you know, the CEO comes to UNC Fitness, we were talking. They would be more than happy to come and give the, the signboard at the Church Street Park, but we got to see what their products are and what they can, you know, market it, and what they can give us value. So, those are the kind of things, you know, how can we use them? Like, we had a meeting with Forge, like, you know, they were more than happy to fund the smart, you know, like, smart shuttle things. So, so we have so many businesses all around that RFPs are just not going to work. You know, RFP might work, like, Church Street Park, we are doing it, we solicited those kind of things, but till you push them to the people and say, "Hey, this is what it is," so a few more things that come to my mind are, like, the stands, you know? We, they stayed one-point-four million dollars, one-point-two-five, if they did two stands. If you get one more stand, say, half a million dollars, in India, like, you have each stand, like, you know, who has a naming right, or who built it, like, an East Stand, like, you know, this one, like, so there's so many opportunities, and I think, sitting on the dais, you'll not get good output. I think a work session where all come in, have a good collaboration, and one night, I may be having only one person of the idea, many people might be building on top of it. So, when we do it, we should cater what is in the best interest of our town. It's good to have, like, see what Cary does and other things, so that from a legal point of view, and what, but I think we need our fresh.
You're staying, like, more direct contact with the?
Absolutely. You have to go in. RFP, no one will come. There, there's no motivation for them.
So, Mayor Protam, I think what I hear you talking about is more the process side of it. What we want to do is get a policy in place that you're comfortable with, how this could work in terms of what the levels of sponsorship would be, who approves what, how that works, and then the procedure or the process behind that will certainly evolve. We recognize we've not done this before, so Will's already done some outreach to Greater Raleigh Convention and Visitors Bureau, to the Greater Raleigh Sports Authority, he's reached out to other municipalities, talking to people like Cary that do this, so that we're gaining that information. And so, I think we can certainly then have the opportunity, as we grow this, to sit down with Smart Cities and other people and get that feedback and that input. That all makes perfect sense. But I think right now, what we want to do is establish that policy that you all are comfortable with, that, so that we can begin that work within the confines of that policy.
Yeah. I mean, as I said, the policy right now is so, if you go down the slides, it's so loosely given, like, you know, less than fifty thousand, but it doesn't define what it is. You know, it doesn't say two thousand what it is. So, like, if you're doing a policy, it has to be more granular of what it is, right? You know, I want to give two thousand dollars for a bench. Where do I find it? It's not there. So, those kind of things, like, so it has to be wide open, where people will come up with opportunities of how they want to stick their name and how we can accept it.
I would add that a lot of the details are in the, in the agreement. Like I was saying, you want the policy to, to be kind of, you know, nimble, but when you get to that agreement, that's when you say, "What, two thousand, what is it for?" Or, "What's the term of that?" That kind of thing, so, as well.
Yeah, so, I, I don't want to go, because this is, these are the kind of conversations, I think, a work session, like, suppose I have five thousand dollars I want to give. What do you have for me? You know, like, I don't want someone to be handing over to me a twenty-page document, "Go read this," you know? So, how, what is the need that the town has that we could capitalize from that? Those are the kind of things where it is important. Yes, policy is important, but at the same time, you have to cater to what the other person is giving to. In the Bank of America, wanted, you know, certain things that we wanted, one-point-five million dollars. They, they were ready to give because they wanted some naming rights. SECU gave two million dollars. So, you had to go behind the big fish for that, but at the same time, have open mind as to you don't know who will come.
Noted.
Thank you for sharing that. Councilmember Rowe, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
I think that one, one area where I've always seen opportunity, and maybe you already mentioned this, is I understand the point of not having, like, a fitness center sponsor something at MFC to compete against us, but I think companies with their wellness programs could certainly perhaps buy memberships, you know? I don't know how that works, whether that'd be a corporate membership, where, you know, we have so many companies here in the area that, you know, they were either subsidized at a discounted rate or whatever, and then their employees as part of their wellness programs, because a lot of these companies are getting actually payments to get their people healthy, and it would cost them less to pay to MFC. So, that's just one idea of bringing revenue into our aquatic center to pay for equipment and amenities, and I've always thought that. So, I think that's something we should look at, just in terms of.
Yeah, I think it's a little different than sponsorship. I mean, that's probably allowed. I don't think it's considered a sponsorship. I wouldn't think so.
No, so it'd be more just like, what would the category of that be called then? Like, if a company like, let's just go out there on fitness center, but let's say, a company, you know, say, "Well, we're going to buy, you know, three hundred memberships for our employees," or whatever. I don't know what that would be. If we can look into that.
Yeah, we'll look, yeah.
I think we have that, we have that framework already, I think, in their policy over there.
I, I think that, I mean, like, I, I like, I think, like, sporting would be one area, like cricket, obviously. I mean, I think that, you know, you know, just a company that has an international presence, has a lot of employees that plays cricket, like, you know, Infosys, Lenovo, any of these big companies where they could really come in, because I think sporting is something that, is something that would differentiate us, you know? I mean, Cary's building, you know, so many, well, they're so, which is bigger than us, but, you know, soccer and tennis park, now they're, you know, got a pro pickleball tournament next week, I think April first week. So, sporting really brings the value of the people coming in, and the one thing that we have is cricket. So, I think that would be a really, really good thing to do. And then, the other thing I'm always curious about, but it's just, you know, I don't know whether it could be done, is whether, you know, companies could, now they would have to work with the DOT, but if some company came in and said, you know, "We have so many people going on these roads and thoroughfares, we're going to, you know, advance money and call it like Lenovo Parkway," or something like that, and then, like, you know, I'll give you an example, like, one of the areas where there's sidewalk caps in Morrisville is near the Hindu Society in North Carolina, and during the holy event and other events, people are walking on the road, it's kind of, you know, hard, and we could invest that in ourselves, but would a company come in and say, "Look, you know, we're going to do that," but I don't know whether that's something that can be done, whether the state would allow that, or, you know, just creative thinking.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. Great presentation. A lot of thought has gone into this, and I know there's many people that you're representing tonight, so. that you're representing tonight, so it's exciting to see the policy development and the thoughts behind it. When I think about sponsorships, I think about, it really is an opportunity to create our own grant story, because we know our needs for the town, and if people come to us with money, we have many options that they could provide, some feedback or additional funding. It, this grant, like, program helps us grow and maximize our dollars. I, I like the fact that the sporting events and the town events are natural sponsorship opportunities. I think more work has to be done with facilities, that, that, that does need a workshop, there is a lot of thinking there. It is a very big decision about what is appropriate and what is needed to consider when looking at physical buildings. However, we need to be more inclusive and allow, you know, smaller amounts of money so that people who maybe spent their, you know, childhood, or their career, or their families have lived here for generations, an opportunity to leave a piece of them behind. And the bench idea that Mayor Protam-Geramela suggested is something that it will improve the town, it will maximize the value to the community, and it will also be a part of our history with, you know, if there's someone that wants to sponsor a bench. So that's something that I've seen when I'm walking, sometimes I want a bench, and it, there are far and few between, so a bench program that is in light of this policy, that looks at opportunities to add value, that is not such a high dollar amount, that is more reasonable, allows everyone to participate in this kind of activity, you know? It's, benches aren't cheap, but yet, they would be, they wouldn't be gone in a day, like a, like a town event might be. So I would like to expand the scope to include park amenities like benches, and also I support the workshop idea to maybe iron out some more of these details. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So, thank you, Will. A lot of work went into this, and appreciative that we have something to comment on. It's always easier, always easier to comment on something than, than the hours it took to put it together, for sure. So thank you for bringing this forward. You, you started by saying lots of folks have looked at this, but I didn't see anywhere where Parks and Recs Advisory Committee had looked at this yet, and this is, obviously affects a lot of the programming in Parks and Recs when we talk about sponsorship, and I know they have a meeting tomorrow night. Is this on their agenda before we?
No, it hasn't gone to them yet, no.
Okay, I'd like them to weigh in. I think it's important that they are aware of this and can comment and add another set of eyes, and I think that this affects their programming, for sure, so at least the sponsorship portion of it, even, even the naming rights, if you're talking about naming rights for Parks and Recs facilities, but I'd like, I'd like them to have the opportunity weigh in. And then, and I'm, I'm back and forth on this. You talked about individuals could sponsor, and I, I, I'm supportive of that, but, and you talked about how political organizations were not, you would decline political organizations. So what about an individual who's a political individual? Where is that, does that, because I, I, and I will tell you, I'm, I'm looking at the paragraph where you talked about A, B, and C of what, where you would decline, and I know there's a, there's a line there that says, you know, anything that would undermine the public confidence in the town's impartiality, but does that cover that?
I would just say, we reserve the right to accept sponsorships that we want to accept, and, and we, I guess, the, the wording in certain parks speaks to that. So we're not boxing to a corner to have to accept someone who was a political person who wanted to get a facility, you know, for something that's not good.
Candidate Mary Brown for Morrisville Town Council is sponsoring this event. That, that's, I, that would undermine the impartiality of the town of Morrisville, I would think, but I want to make sure you think that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
That all of you have, unless we have to spell that out in, in more specific detail.
I wouldn't think so. I would think the committees sitting around the table will look at that and, and see where that would fall under.
Okay, okay, um, okay, let me mull that a bit. And then, getting back to Mayor Protam-Geramela's comments about identifying opportunity and being more aggressive and proactive, I a hundred percent agree. I think we can do both, though. I think we can start moving on a policy and, and as time goes by, amend this policy and add, and, because I agree with what Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson said about making some kind of naming opportunities available to those that can't afford, you know, a million dollars or, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and a bench idea would be fabulous, so.
Actually, I was thinking, I was giving all different examples. Here we have a champion of Pan Can, so, you know, you, you raise a lot of funds, so you, you're an expert in all that.
Yeah, I raise money, I raise money differently. I don't put it on benches and, but yeah, yes, well, thank you for that. But anyhow, I, I like this idea, but I think we can, I think we can do multiple things at once, I think we can move a policy forward that we have something, and then we can amend it, and we can add to it, and we can definitely strategize and come up with, again, identifying opportunities, because I, I totally agree. Nobody's not gonna come knocking on my door. They haven't come knocking on our door yet. So I think we need to get, go out there and be aggressive, and I think bringing a lot of people to the table to help us identify is gonna be important. And then we can expand this policy, too. It's a living document, so.
Seniors, you know, they would be good, because some people will be targeting just the seniors living, you know? And Smart Cities, IOTs and others, that some tech companies will be interested in that, so it's just not the Parks and Recs, it's spread across.
I, I totally agree with you. This is not just a Parks and Recs that can sponsor or, or have their name on facilities or Parks and Recs facilities, but I think we, I think we'll kind of talk to that. There's, there's lots of opportunity here, and we have to kind of take a stab at this and move forward, and then keep, keep amending it and expanding it as we go forward.
Thank you. So I would say with RFPs, can we not put RFP out but still reach out to certain entities? Okay.
So, okay. Yeah, I just had some thoughts. I would like to keep this moving forward. I like the idea of having Parks and Rec take a peek at it. Any committee really can weigh in if people are paying attention to this meeting, so we're always looking for input, but I don't think we need to slow things down. I, I like the sponsorships as they are shown right now. I think that's, we'll learn what gets taken, what doesn't, what we need to adjust price-wise. I'm a little concerned about the naming, the costs. I'm not sure if we have people like, you're talking about, big corporations, I don't know if nine hundred thousand dollars is real holistic for Church Street. So I'd be more open to not having the one-third, I'm not sure where that came from, but sort of see what happens, do it for like a two-year short period, like iterate to innovate. So we'll learn as we go, just don't give a ten, ten-year thing for really cheap. We don't want to lock in, but we'll see where the market takes us as we learn. I like the idea of starting with some of the smaller things, like maybe just the, the dugouts of Church Street, name those, name a couple of shelters, see where we are, see what kind of interest this is. But I, I like the idea of just moving forward with this, as was mentioned, we've been thinking about this for a long time, now we're in a position to actually move it forward, and I think we're gonna learn as we go, and we are not a Wake Med, we're not a Pan Can, so we just want to get some revenue rather than having these large naming opportunities that aren't taken. I'd rather have something for a smaller amount for three years than something sitting without any naming rights at all.
So you're saying to adjust the one-third to a lower?
I'm not sure. It just seems, those numbers seem really high for what they are.
So where that came from, you asked, it was, it was fairly standard across several naming rights policies, what we found. The, the one-third, it was a couple of other things, but that's what we saw.
So I guess, we'll, we'll see if we, if we go with that, and after six months, nothing, we can readjust. I mean, we're learning as we go. So I, I'm in favor of moving this forward. I like the idea, and I think that, um, if we have some issues, I'm more than open to workshopping it later, or having a call out to people, please send us your ideas about how you think this can work better. Our staff thinks that it's a workshop we do in Town Hall, all, all the more, and then we can have the Chamber of Commerce help us. Would that, was the chamber part of this at all?
They, they were not.
So they might have some insights about sponsorships, since they've been doing that for a while. So you guys are really getting a great start for this, we really appreciate it. It looks like people want a second round, and I wasn't great about identifying who, so I'm just gonna start with Councilmember Fender and then come back to this side.
I just had a real quick question. Is there a plan for how the revenue generated will be, like, will it go into a specific fund or department? How's, what's the plan?
So we're, we're speaking with finance, and we haven't finalized how that will be taken in or dispersed out within that, so. No, haven't been finalized yet.
All right.
Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Mayor Protam-Geramela.
Just what the mayor said about the chamber weighing in reminded me that I don't think it would be a bad idea to have some economic development expertise on this, whether it be, whether that comes from the chamber, or whether, you know, it's, it's economic development expertise on staff, but I think that the two, you know, I think that those two functions, the, I don't really see this, honestly, as a Parks and Rec initiative. I don't think that, I mean, I guess I think that if, you know, if we got money for something, there would be programming to be done, and that would be a Parks and Rec implication, but the, the actual, the actual fundraising, the actual contacts in the, in the, in the technical, the business world that would support opportunities like this, I would see that as more of an economic development function rather than a Parks and Rec function. That's just a thought, but I think, you know, I think some Parks and Rec, I, Parks and Rec, some, I think some economic development expertise on this would also not go amiss.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's Parks and Rec, it's more of a town, town venture.
Mayor Protam-Geramela, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
No, I think Donna brings a very good point about, you know, how the fund should go. I think it should go from where it's coming back to what that field is. I would put it, like, if it is coming, say, Church Street, you know, just an example, or, you know, Marshall Community Center Phase Three, put it into those areas, you know, for those developments. Don't use money from here and then put it somewhere else, that it just dissipates. It is important to keep a focus that that is the place we got it from, so that we can develop that area more. And, a, a, and I tend to disagree with the mayor regarding the one-third thing. Let's have our prestige of going big, because there is a lot of money out there, and we're not losing anything, I would still say, because our parks are world-class, you know, and especially cricket, there is so much money in that, and I, I would be very cautious in going any low, because we have invested eight and a half million dollars or ten million dollars in the Church Street already, plus one point two five, plus a lot of other things with maintenance. If someone comes, okay, I'll give you a hundred fifty thousand dollars, have my name on it, it has no value to it. You know, even if you do it two years, you got a million-dollar value out of a hundred thousand. Why should we even have that? So I would stay low, I would stay high and basically ensure we get the right people there.
Councilmember Johnson.
So I'll, I agree. I, I, I would not change your values at all either, quite frankly. I think we need to start somewhere, and if we need to tweak it, we tweak it, but I, I like what has been proposed, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't go lower at this time, and I would be aggressive and proactive a, a, at the same time. To, to have a policy and then do nothing with it, and I'm not, I'm not, I know you're not advocating that, but to have a policy and do nothing with it, we definitely won't get anything, so we, we need to do our work after this. But, and I, I agree with Councilmember Rabadi, she talked about somebody with economic development background, I agree. I, and I just want to clarify my, my points about the Parks and Recs Advisory Committee. This affects a lot of their programs. The programs now that we're talking about for sponsorships all come out of Parks and Rec, so they should be made aware of what, of what this policy is, and they should be, have the opportunity to also weigh in on it. So that, that was my, you know, that was my concern with that, although I realize at a broader level, they're not the ones that are only gonna manage it, this is a townwide effort, I get that.
Yeah, there are, there are a few events on there that are not parks, but generally, most of them are parks.
I also had thought about Morrisville Community Park Phase Three, like, maybe naming some of the individual courts rather than the whole thing, parsing things out, making it a little smaller as a step. Also, town center kiosks, something like that, I know there's opportunities for them to install kiosks in exchange for advertising, we could put our programming out there, we might be able to get some money from that. Any kind of bricks at town center or the Veterans Memorial.
I like that.
Other kind of ideas, things like that would be good. This is a little bit tangential, but this is a really good policy that we've been talking about for a while. We have a council, it was a while back, we talked about having maybe a nonprofit policy as well, about supporting the nonprofits that are in the area, like there's Dorcas, Carrying Place, things that serve Morrisville residents, and we can identify money that could do, that they could allocate only to Morrisville residents. So that's sort of, we talked about a little bit, but we never gave staff clear direction that we're interested in having something like that be looked at, like this was looked at. So I was just wondering if any council members would like to react to that? Would they be interested in seeing if we want to create some kind of policy? I know Kerry does it, Apex does it, other towns around provide opportunities for the town to contribute back, and it's not decided by the council, it's decided by staff through a policy, kind of like this will be, except for naming rights. So, is it, Councilmember Rabadi?
I don't see it.
I see that it's, it's due to be a roundtable.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, well, I'll just bring it up at the next roundtable then, so that's just planting the seed. Just a general policy. That, that was the connection. Councilmember Ralph?
Yeah, one thing that I would like to see is, I, I love this idea of outstanding individuals that, you know, have demonstrated a lot to the town. One area that I think is important, and this came up during our, our search for the murals, is we're very strong in black history in Morrisville with the Shiloh community. I learned a lot about some of these leaders just running in Church Street, about, you know, Luther Green, which these, Luther Green Center, Dunston, who was a real leader in agriculture, you know, to have, like, another major park or building or facility named after one of those individuals, that, which could then bring awareness to the public of the rich history of this community, which I do, am concerned that as more time goes by and Morrisville grow, continues to grow and reaches build-out, that, you know, we're not having that conversation enough with many of the new residents that come here. So that's just something to think about, and we can brainstorm in a work session, or who are the, you know, individuals that we believe have been really important pillars of history in Morrisville? So just something to think about.
So I think when the policy is in place, that's the perfect discussion to have, once it's in place, to bring that forward, and it falls right in line with that.
I think you've heard us each thank you for bringing this all together, the whole team. I know this was a town-wide effort to make this happen, so thank you. Do you have anything else that you need from us before we consider this next meeting?
Brandon has it.
Yes, please.
So, thank you, Will, for the information. So I think I've heard a couple of things. Let me offer some potential steps forward then that might be slightly different from what we had. So I appreciate the suggestion for Parks and Rec Advisory, respectfully, we're not going to make tomorrow night. So we could make the April meeting and then come back to you in May and get your thoughts on the policy. That would also give you some additional time to take a look at the policy. Shoot us any feedback you might have about that. If there's anything particular you want to see in the policy, keeping in mind that, you know, there is some intentional vagueness in there so we don't limit ourselves by trying to describe everything we could do. I think a next step after you considering potentially adoption of the policy, if you're so willing, in May, is we could come back to you after that for a work session where we have identified a more thorough list of things that might be eligible for sponsorship or naming rights. And then we could have that discussion with you. You could share your thoughts on that. That would be sort of outside of the policy as almost like an addendum or part of our process, but we would be, make sure that we are on the same page as far as what you might be interested in allowing to be sponsored or allowing to be named or what you don't think should be named or that sort of thing. I think that's important as well. And then from there, we could certainly consider, you know, a community forum if you think that there is value in that in the future to bring people in. I do think it's important to get the policy going because you have one sort of imminent opportunity, I think, which is the dog park. So I think that that could very well be your first opportunity to pursue a significant sponsorship or naming rights to that dog park if you're willing to consider that. We could do some targeted, you know, we'd involve an RFP, but we could certainly do some targeted outreach to groups that would make sense to potentially sponsor that. And then we could, you know, come back to you with ideas on that. And we have one or two other smaller sponsorship things that I think we can look at, that we could bring back to you as potential. Let's kick it off and see how this works. And then I think Councilmember Johnson is right. I mean, this is a fluid document. This is a start. We know this will potentially change over time as well.
Did you have something you wanted to?
Yeah. Brandon, does this have to be stated in the budget? The reason I bring, I say budget because at the last pages you have, you know, cost of these, cost of that, like, you know, is stated. Does any of those things have to be on that line items there?
I think once we establish what your guidelines are, they could certainly become a part of that fee schedule under a sponsorship policy. I think the naming rights is a little bit different.
It's different, you know.
But these, you know, the ones that Will has outlined particularly for our events and other things that you may help us identify.
Exactly.
Could certainly be in the fee schedule. You know, do we have that ready in time for you to include it in your adopted budget? Perhaps not, but we could always bring it back as an amendment.
Okay, perfect. As long as it's stated there, it's good.
Yeah, we want to be transparent.
Exactly.
And it's another opportunity to share that with the community as well and have it be right there. We'll make sure it's, you know, prominent on the website as well that people are looking for that. And again, I think we have opportunities with, you know, we get regular requests from media for news stories on slower days. So I think this is something we could roll out while we're doing it, why we think it benefits the community, those sort of things. And, you know, we can push it ourselves. And then again, some targeted.
Video.
Recruitment.
A video, we can do a video about it.
We could certainly do another video. We're getting pretty good at those, so yes.
We like videos.
I'd be interested in knowing the council's thoughts about, instead of having, waiting for Parks and Rec to actually receive a presentation, just going ahead and sending the PowerPoint to Parks and Rec. I mean, essentially, I think what they would look at, like what I looked at, is the sponsorship levels for the different events that affect Parks and Rec. So if they have input about that or anything else, they can send it to us as a council. And that way we don't lose a month and we still get the value of their input. So I just like the way things keep moving forward rather than just pushing them out. So I appreciate how the town manager would like to make sure that they get a full presentation, but they could just watch what we just did at their leisure before their second meeting from now and still give us information before April 9th. So that's just a thought. Councilmember Johnson.
So yeah, I don't want to keep holding this up either, although doing it that way does not give them the opportunity to ask questions and discuss. And that is where the meat of everything we do is. So I appreciate the recommendation and the suggestion from the town manager because that satisfies my concern. I think it satisfies Councilmember or Mayor Protem Garamella's concern about wanting to maybe add some more to it now and, but I don't want to push it more than a month.
No, we would be back.
Yeah, no, I hear you on that. I think it's important to keep it moving as quickly as possible. But I also want to be incredibly respectful to the members of our Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and the work that they do as it relates to our events and sponsorships.
Okay, so we're all good with the town manager's suggestion going forward, that timeline? Looking for head nods? Okay, that seems to be consensus. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the suggestion. Okay, so we'll see you.
In May.
Three meetings from now.
Yeah, great.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we're at item 12 now, future meetings, events and community engagement opportunities. As always, for a full listing of events, please see our town council calendar, our town calendar at morrisvillnc.gov. Just a few things, this Thursday, the 28th, from 5 till 7 p.m. at Morrisville Community Park, join us to celebrate spring at our first peeps in the park, Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources Fund Easter Spring themed scavenger hunt. Find all the hidden peeps and win a prize. Games, food trucks and other fun surprises are part of the event. Town offices will be closed this Friday for Good Friday. On Friday, April 12th through Sunday, April 14th, join us in Holly Springs Ting Stadium to cheer for the Morrisville Fire Department as we face off against nine other local fire, police and EMS departments in a double elimination softball tournament. Ticket sales go to support Shields and Stripes, so come out and cheer for your favorite public safety heroes onto victory while supporting a great cause. On Saturday, April 20th, please join us to celebrate Earth Day during your regular Western Wake Farmers Market visit on April 20th from 8 a.m. until noon. You can learn about, from the experts and enjoy some fun prizes and activities. More details to come on that exciting event. At this time, our council manager comments, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Strong and Johnson followed by Mayor Protem Garamella.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very excited to see that we have such excellent schools and their basketball programs. What an amazing year we have. And of course, as I sit next to my fellow councilmember Fender, whose son goes to UNC, I'd just like to say, I hope NC State comes out on top because my son goes to NC State. So, but good luck to all the teams in the tournament. It's just a wonderful time for everyone in the triangle and, you know, it's an exciting time, so go basketball. So thank you.
Go basketball. Mayor Protem Garamella followed by Councilmember Johnson.
No, I think I'm good.
Councilmember Johnson followed by myself.
I just have one comment for those that celebrate. This week is Holy Week, so I wish everyone a happy Easter this weekend.
Okay, it'll be me followed by Councilmember Robati. I just want to say I enjoyed helping our future leaders at events at the Wake Early College of Information and Biotechnology over at Wake Tech and Green Hope High School last week. Staff and volunteers from around the triangle, this is a separate thing, around the triangle planted 200 trees at Morrisville Community Park last week. And if you have not been there recently, take a moment to sit and reflect on one of the new benches overlooking the big field there. It is very pleasant and it was really nice. There's a lot of people there for the Holy Celebration last weekend, just overseeing everything and it was really pretty. We enjoyed a couple of Holy Festivals this past weekend and I think I got most of the color out of my ears at this point. I want to say that a few of the staff mentioned that we had some visitors in town recently and it's been a few years since the White House has invited a representative from Morrisville to welcome them. And I was fortunate and honored enough to welcome Vice President Kamala Harris as she departed, came off the plane today and President Biden as well. And I shared with the Vice President our language access program and she was very interested in that. So she might be reaching out to us to see if she can uplift that program a little bit. She was very impressed by the work being done by the team. And I want to say congratulations to all of America for 14 years of the Affordable Care Act. That was their emphasis and that's why they're visiting Raleigh today. So it was really neat that they were able to do that. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and recognize Councilmember Robati followed by Councilmember Fender.
Thank you. I was honored to be invited to see Joe Biden kick off the White House Initiative on Women's Health Research. That's going to be a fantastic program and I'm very, very excited for the implications, especially to maternal and fetal health outcomes in marginalized populations. I also wanted to say that you all can say that you're dedicated to your schools, but I have a bracket in which NC State takes out Purdue. So that is where, that's where the rubber meets the road, so thank you.
Councilmember Fender followed by Councilmember Ralph.
I did not meet the president or the vice president today. I will however be rooting for the Tar Heels on Thursday and to win the, get into the Final Four, beat NC State if we have to. I'd normally be rooting for Georgia Tech, my alma mater, but since they're not doing very good this year, I gotta, I gotta get behind Carolina.
Got to. Councilmember Ralph?
I have about seven minutes.
So you have no comments?
No, 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 no. I have, I have three comments. First of all, there's three things I want to say. First of all, I went to the UNC Clean Tech Summit this past week and had the honor of meeting and hearing from Secretary Regan from the EPA. I want to give a shout out to Jim Simmons, who's in the audience. It really is amazing we have such engaged residents. He was there for the entire summit and I really liked the fact that someone that serves on our committee would take the time to do that and it's really great. So looking forward to you bringing great ideas back from the summit. I went to Winston-Salem to see the Smart Cities Challenge. I really want to thank the town of Morrisville for their support of the HBCUs and some of the Morrisville presentations were amazing. So I need to find out who won those awards. And the final thing is just to hold the date for May 15th, hosting John Chambers for a virtual fireside chat on AI and our future. He's a venture capitalist now in Silicon Valley and chaired Wensysco for 20 years. And we're going to invite the entrepreneurial community, startup community to listen to John about artificial intelligence. Can't think of a better person to learn about kind of its implications, where jobs can be created, the kinds of opportunities for investors. So looking forward to, that's going to be at the Triangle J, so just save the date. I'm working with his team on that. And finally, as we celebrate so much diversity, wishing happy Easter to every Christian out there, but also holy and then also Ramadan and Barak. So, you know, dawned upon me how many different faiths we have and that we can, we can wish everyone all of those different holidays. So thank you so much and have a great night.
And I'll also say that our comms department has been really great about inclusivity and diversity in celebrating all of those holidays and being, really recognizing all those things. And I think one of our HBCU teams got like, I think, third place or something, but I'd like to pass it to town manager Zudema for maybe talk about that and some other items.
I'm actually going to pass it to his manager.
Need for, yeah, sorry, thank you. To John for a second for an update on Skoggins Avenue and then I'll come back. I've got several things for you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. You'll remember last, at your last meeting on March 12th, Ms. Best Zinkland of 121 Skoggins Avenue spoke during the public address portion with a concern about truck traffic and turnarounds on her street. And after, after her comments, she met with our Director of Engineering. The following morning, he and the Director of Public Works met on Skoggins Avenue to brainstorm some solutions. They were able to come up with something that they thought would work and would not impede the disc golf pathway that was further down Skoggins Avenue. With their teams, they were able to design that and get it implemented by the end of the week. I met with Ms. Skoggins and the owner of the home last week. They're very happy with the responsiveness and that the turnaround was fixed. They think it's probably a good solution. They don't know yet, but they're hopeful. They appreciated the road being cleaned up, the side limbs and so on being trimmed back and how responsive the town was. So I would like to thank both Mark and Jeffrey for getting on this right away and being responsive. At your seats, you have a little more thorough summary of that conversation as well, some photos of the implementation that they put in place. And so any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them for you.
And if anyone's interested in seeing it in person, I'm happy to show you the disc golf course. Town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Several updates. The first one, you have heard that there is solar going on Town Hall. That was going to start last week, but we have had to delay that. So part of that is funded through a Build America by America grant. And what we realized is they were finalizing the authorization for this project is that they require you to buy American and the majority of solar panels are not built in America. So we're on pause. They recognize that that is sort of their issue. We're not the only ones dealing with that. So we're anticipating probably a minimum of 60-day delay while they deal with that. I think we're also considering an exemption request in case they don't resolve their own sort of issue. So we're taking a two-pronged approach to get that back moving as soon as it's practical. It will happen, it will not be an issue, it's just a delay. Will that get sorted out by the grantor? It's not a town issue and we weren't the only one dealing with it. Just wanted you to have that update. Some other better news, pleased to share with you that our own fire chief, Nate Lozinski, has been accepted to the National Fire Academy's Executive Fire Officer Program. That is the creme de la creme of opportunities for fire chiefs, very competitive process. They took less than 25% of the applicants and so he will benefit from that. The fire department will benefit from that. The town will benefit from that. And he would have been here tonight, but he's on a well-deserved vacation. So I prefer he be there than, than here to be recognized. Also want to share, I think you're aware, but particularly for the public, our IT department has received yet another accolade, the CIO 100 Award, very, very prestigious award for all the work that they've done. So that goes out to Rick and really all of his staff. That is an award that has been won most consistently by like Fortune 500 companies, not groups the size of the town of Morrisville. So really speaks to the tremendous work that they are doing. So very proud of them. Also want to share with you that we, for the first time in the history of the town, have been selected for a UNC School of Government Fellow. So that will be someone that will come and work for us for about 10 or 11 months. We have, we made an application to that program and we applied for someone that would come and help us implement our language access plan over the next year because we did not have the staff to do that, quite honestly, effectively. So we reached out and made the application and so they selected us. And so that person, we'll do some interviews, I think sometime, probably in April, and have that person identified. We get to select who that person is through their candidates. And then that person does some training with School of Government in July, probably should be here around August 1st and will be with us through at least May of next year. And we're going to, our funding portion is going to come out of some remnants of some ARPA funding that are still laying around out there. So little bits here and there that we're going to use that, particularly because it's a one-time opportunity. Now, again, in a perfect world, could that person then become a staff member after if we had a position or an opportunity? They certainly could, but it's really going to help us tremendously with getting off the ground with the language access plan. So we're very excited about that.
That is a lot of good news.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Last reminder, if you are attending Town and State with us tomorrow and coming with us, please be in the parking lot at 3 o'clock. We want to make sure we get everybody here, have a little time to get everybody ready and then we want to not be pulling in at, you know, the crack of the meeting starting. So we're going to leave a little bit early just to give up some time for traffic and parking, et cetera. So 3 o'clock in the parking lot. Oh yeah, and it's supposed to be a lovely day for a drive, so that'll give us a little time as well.
Okay.
I think that's all I got, Mayor.
Okay, that was good. Lots of good stuff. Anyone else got anything? All set? Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember. I have a motion from Councilmember Rabadi, a second by Mayor Protam Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimously. It's 9:15. We are adjourned. Thank you.